Hey, Emma, I'm just about to start meeting. Let me just see what we got.
Okay, we're live.
Thank you. Um.
I need, can you? I need to go to the conference room.
Okay, listen, I'm about to start the board of trustees meeting. Look.
Okay, well.
Let me just talk to Frankie.
Present.
I'll talk to you after me. Frankie. I can't see him.
Does, well, we can hear this.
Isn't this how all municipal meetings should begin?
Emma, call yes, this means okay. Okay, is the gang all here? The gang's all here. Good evening. And welcome to November 23rd, 2020 Board of Trustees Meeting. I need a motion to open this meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. I'd like to go right into the executive session so we can get that out of the way and then come out and try and plow through our business, which is much the executive session tonight. The summative is on for advice and counsel. Village Attorney personnel matter is anticipated that a motion will be offered in the executive session pursuant to 1051F of the New York Public Offices laws relates to, okay, so DPW personnel matter. That does not have to be dealt with tonight. That could be taken off the agenda. And managers' office personnel matter, this is another 1051F to discuss personnel. I need a motion to go into executive session for the village attorney personnel man and managers' office personnel matter and advise accounts.
So moved.
A question first before we vote. Does the village attorney matter is sufficient for us to also discuss some of the resumes that have come in for land use?
I thought we were gonna, I thought we were gonna do that at the organizational meeting, or we could have another meeting before, but I, I, I'm frankly not prepared to do that tonight. I didn't know we were gonna do that.
Well, I can talk about it very briefly, not to decide anything, but just to at least acknowledge where we have and how to proceed. So including, including that very briefly, not to get into any substantive discussion, but to just move, move it, move the, move the first step. So with that addition, I think we could. Three issues.
I wish I knew we were gonna discuss that tonight. I would look at our resumes.
Hey, Victor, if, if, if you're just looking to kind of, you know, see where we stand and something like that, is that something that we would need to discuss in executive session? Or is that just something we can talk about openly?
It, it's an executive session, very briefly, kind of see how we're going to move forward, how, how, how to review, et cetera. So very briefly on executive session, I think it'll help us instead of just putting it off for, for the, for the fifth. Nothing substantive, no decisions, but just to have a, have a, a plan to work out. That, that's all. That's why it was not a matter of any further discussion or email. So just, they came in, they came in. So let's just move forward.
Well, I, 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 I'm far from discussing process, but if we're gonna, you know, in the future, if we're gonna add stuff to the executive session, I'd like to know beforehand because it gives me time to prepare too.
Understood.
Yeah, okay, uh, can, can we have a motion based upon what Victor said? We have the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Call roll.
Trustees, one chair?
Yes.
Trustee Annette?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Did you fix your internet Kelly?
I did, you know what, I have, we have two zones in the house. And I was obviously on the wrong one because as soon as I got back in, everything was beautiful.
It's not a good feeling though.
Oh my god, like every, every other person was going in and out, it was a mess. Um, so knitting anything good?
No.
I'm sorry. Maybe, should you be knitting something good?
Yeah, I actually, Molly's been knitting, I've been starting things for her, that's, that's the extent of my knitting.
How's she doing?
She's good, she's good, so, she's good. She's trying to knit a lot of Christmas presents.
Oh god, the pressure's on.
Yeah, but she likes to, so, it's okay. It's okay.
You know, I started crocheting during all of this and I find that crocheting can be a little bit, it can actually be more relaxing for me than knitting.
Hi folks. Okay, alright. Uh, we just left the executive session, we're back in, we're back in regular board of trustees meeting. There was a vote, we've like concession, the vote was to send a letter to, to the Department of State, expressing the concerns that our HZMC has with the outfall pipe project in the Village of America, and to ask to work cooperatively with them to try to ameliorate some of those concerns. But that was the only action taken. Okay, we're gonna have to go pretty fast and I would take ten minutes after this before we start the other one, so that people can have a moment to gobble down something or take care of any needs they have. Uh, the first is one seat, what I'm doing is, if you look at your agenda, it's on for the regular meeting, I'm going to that first. I would add that we not add anything else, Board of Trustees, to the next meeting, so that we can get through some of this at the next meeting. Engineering service for West Basin Seawall, uh, if you've been down in Harbor Island Park and you walked around the West Basin, uh, you will see that the seawall is deteriorating, it was a seawall that was built during the depression by the Works Projects Administration. So what was that, that was, was eighty years ago, so it's obviously held up pretty well, uh, but now it's, uh, in need of a lot of work. Jerry, would you like to talk about this for a minute?
Mayor, we have a quote for fourteen thousand six hundred dollars from our consulting engineer to prepare the plans and do, the construction management for the repair of the West Basin Seawall, the request came in letter form from the Coast Guard. This is a little bit of a critical area because there are buildings that are very close to the seawall, unlike at the East Basin where there's some, uh, just, uh, you know, benches and a walkway. Um, so there's a, a more, a more appropriate need for the engineer to develop the plans to make sure that we're, um, doing everything we can to avoid having a building fall into the water.
That would be regrettable.
Yep.
Uh, does anybody have any questions or concerns? This is on for a regular meeting.
The only thing that I have is that the proposal only cites some of the approvals that they need in, um, they need to go to, I think they need to coordinate with Harbin Coastal and Planning, because there's a wetlands permit and a structures permit.
Have land use board applications and approvals for thirty four hundred dollars listed as number five.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Jerry, Jerry, I had a question. Is this something that you see, um, once we hire a village engineer, that, that person taking this over, or would Keller and Sessions just see this through?
Uh, so Keller and Sessions would see this through.
Okay.
I typically, in order to keep costs in control, I ask them for a quote for engineering services as opposed to just asking them to do the work, um, to I, so I can keep them in line as far as our costs. But yeah, they would see this through and then if we did get an engineer, in the near future, we would just do other repairs as needed, or maybe the entire seawall at some point.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, everybody find what happened to sign for regular meeting?
Yes, yes.
Great. Intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County for residential food scrap program. Uh, Jerry, this is just the standard.
That's, that's correct mayor. It's the transportation of food scrap and the disposal, which happens to be right next door to our public works building.
How, how has that been going Jerry? A lot of people using it?
So, a lot of people have continued to, uh, well let me just say this, a lot of people continue to add, there have been numbers added to the rolls of people who, um, are doing food scrap recycling as well as, um, our, uh, our students from Rhineck that have this, um, little nonprofit going now where they pick up food scraps from residents. Uh, they're getting close to a hundred customers now, or a hundred residents that they service, so. It's increasing nicely.
Yeah, this will be a sixty-six percent reduction in what we're paying for the removal right now, so.
Or do we, I mean, I know that because I'm doing that, I have a lot less, you know, dry garbage. Did we, is that seem to be the case? Or we can't sort of figure that out?
I haven't done that analysis. I could at some point, um, and take a, a block of, you know, twelve months, couple of years, or, or six months and see. Uh, what we'll have is around the holidays, we have a lot of food scraps that, uh, if they're recycled, they stay out of the trash, and that will significantly reduce. Trash is, is between now and, and the end of the year, the trash volume increases significantly.
Christmas, yeah.
Wow.
So I noticed that, um, I just wanted to suggest that as we see more traffic from suburban carting under this agreement, that we just remind those trucks to please use Hoyt instead of Waverly to get out.
Hmm, okay. Yeah, uh, so I drive around a lot and I haven't seen any large trash trucks using. I do see the small delivery ice trucks using Waverly, which I've spoken to that individual, but, um, I don't see large trash trucks, uh, suburban type trash trucks using Waverly.
Good, thanks.
Everybody found this being on for regular?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, new business item two A, Hummels Road, so I'm on for regular meeting. Where are we with this Jerry? Well Bob?
I should only, I could only defer to the attorneys because they've been handling it since, um, it's been kicked around quite a bit.
Mrs. Polzino?
Chris, do you want to address this?
Yes, but I believe you had the conversation with Steve, correct? The last conversation, so, um, they were, the town was not, in agreement with the language that was added regarding, uh, in the village that was added to the eighth paragraph. Um, they felt that that then opened them up, um, to requirements throughout the entirety of the village and not where it was meant to open them up to, which was, um, Oak Lane and that area. Um, so Bob, I'm not sure if they suggested language to you that they're looking for, um, but I know that they would like to refine that language further.
They would like to go back to the old language, which just allowed for, uh, the use of the sewer line, any, any sewer line that's built by residents of Oak Lane without paying a fee to the town.
This is on page seven.
I'm sorry Kelly, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm just clarifying, this is on page seven, paragraph eight.
Paragraph eight, yes.
Okay, go ahead Dan.
All laid out in Mr. Altieri's email, which is the first page of the, um, the, in the packet.
Yeah.
Look, can you repeat that? Cause I did not hear you clearly.
The, the objection is to the language that, uh, that the village added in the last go around, that was, the town will not charge a sewer fee for any sewer discharge in the village. The town has no objection to allowing residents of Oak Lane to connect to a future sewer line without paying fees to the town. But they object to the broad language that would allow any residents to, uh, connect.
The problem with that, I believe, and you guys should be able to figure that out better than I, uh, is that you have houses on both Hummels Road and Eagle Knicks Road, uh, Eagle Knowles Road, excuse me, that are not connected. So if they connect, are they required to pay or not?
The Hummels Road folks are not, cause they're covered by a different section of disagreements, which talks about the, the line being built down Hummels Road. The folks on Eagle Knowles are not covered and the town is not willing to include that.
Well, that's a problem, uh, that we should be fair to all of our residents. Why would we exclude them?
I'm telling you what the town's position is, I don't, I'm not arguing for or against it.
I understand.
I'm telling you what the town has said. It set forth in Mr. Altieri's email.
Okay, I, I don't have any problem if they're trying to avoid a, anything coming from the Hampshire Country Club. Now we're in the future, that's, that's a different issue. The, what I'm concerned about is the, the, you have homes that are developed on both. I also think there may be a problem on clause one, because it says from two oh three on Hummels Road to Eagle Next Road and I believe, uh, that some of the, I don't know what the current map is, but the original maps that were submitted to, uh, the land use boards showed a manhole on, uh, Oak Lane, where they would connect.
Yeah.
But Dan, did those plans show anything connecting to Eagle Knowles?
No. What they showed is the line going from Oak, from two oh three out the drive that goes to Oak Lane, down, down Oak Lane to Hummels Road, Hummels Road to Eagles Next Road and to the manhole there.
But.
So, my, my concern is that we should be treating all, protecting all of our residents and have, you know, one of the problems is to make sure that the language is, is right.
Would it be possible, instead of trying to use words, to use a map that showed what, you know, where the sewer line is and what is covered?
I, I don't think the problem is the description, at least with regard to the line with the bulk of the problem. The bulk of the problem is that the town wants to limit free discharges to Hummels Road and Oak Lane.
Well, we, the village, the village is waiving that. And the town is in reciprocity for the town waiving that. But we're not making exclusions, the village is not making exclusions and we're, what I'm hearing is the town is making exclusions. Am I misunderstanding that Bob?
Well, but the town, the number of homes in the town, I believe, is, is pretty limited. It's, I think it's fewer than the number of homes in the village that would benefit from these lines.
I'm not so sure, but I haven't counted them, but you have, you have, um, you have the whole extension from, uh, uh, from past two oh five to two twenty.
Right, I think there are only a few homes on that stretch.
They're on both sides of the street, so I'm not sure, one, two, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. There may be eight or eight to ten homes there. About.
There are, I think, six homes on Oak Lane and maybe another few on in the village part of Hummels Road.
So, I mean, I'd asked Dan Sarnoff earlier whether there were homes on both Hummels Road and Eagle Next Road that were not connected to this sewer. And I was, am I correct Dan, that there were homes on both that are not connected?
There were homes on, uh, Hummels and Eagle Knowles that are on septic.
Okay, so the issue is to allow them to be able to, you know, uh, to connect without having to pay additional, you know, I'll call it a tipping charge, I don't care, I don't remember how the agreement freight refers to it. If the concern is going past a number on Eagles Road, Knowles Road, you could limit it to that number because that's what the development is. That's developed today. Or I think Nora's idea of having a map that shows anything, you know, anything that's in this map can plot, but that, that's for you guys to solve.
It seems like the problem is, there's one house that's on the corner of Eagle Knowles and Hummels and like a triangular lot. That, that's clearly gonna have the pipes running right behind it. But then on the, all the other houses on Eagle Knowles Road are sufficiently distant that would be, that would have to be a whole new line. So maybe they just exclude Eagle Knowles Road until that line is put in. I don't know, I mean.
But, but the issue, if that line is put in, then they, then they would be paying the town to be able to use the line. Not, not their line, they use the town's line. The transfer of sewage from one line to the other. And the whole purpose of this is to say, let's, it's basically a wash between the two, let's just waive the fees for both ways and, you know, let it be done.
Well, I, I think what they're saying, and I don't want to argue their position, but what they're saying is, you know, you're gonna have a lot more houses than we're gonna have. And truthfully, I mean, at, at the end of the day, right? We, we can do a different I, another IMA when the people in Eagles Knowles decide that they want to hook up.
Well, they can't even hook up unless there's an entire new sewer line built, only one.
Right, and, and that would be, have to, have to be built entirely by a village.
Right.
Actually Nora, that's not totally, and Tom, that's not totally correct, could run individual lines.
No, I don't think they can.
You're, right, right now you have one, two, three, you have four houses on Eagle Next, uh, Road.
The village's position has been, if you're gonna hook up to a public line, you have to allow hookups along the way. That's been a village's position.
Right. So there's, one of the, so I would just say, the house on the corner, it's like a, you know, it's a lot with a rounded edge, is in both the village and the town, but it's right in front of it. So they would be able to hook up. The other houses would have to build, there would have to be a line that goes down to the pipe. We'd have to tear up the street, so it wouldn't be something they could do individually unless they could get a, a right of way through someone's property, which isn't likely. So we're talking about an entirely different sewer line.
I, I, I would, I would like to go back to the language that originally had about Eagle, about Oak Lane and just get this done tonight. I mean, this is, you know, something that's gonna help the village, it's gonna help the town. In the future, if people want to hook up on Eagles Knowles, you know, we're not gonna leave them on their own, we'll figure something out. I mean, this is, you know, I, I don't wanna make this so complicated that, uh, you know, the perfect hurts the good. So, you know, I, I mean, we've been going around on this for months and, uh, you know, the, the, the people who are trying to put this line in, you know, are rightfully getting frustrated.
I mean, the line's in, right? The line's in.
Right, but they want, they want the agreement so that they can, you know, have a lot of paperwork in order. have a little paperwork in order.
But the paper, Tom, the paperwork at, at present is not in order.
That's what we're doing here tonight, Daniel.
So, so I, I think what they have asked us to do on page seven, paragraph eight, is, you know, change it to, "The town shall not cha-charge the village a sewer use fee for the discharge of sanitary waste from any parcel having frontage on Oak Lane," period.
Well, then.
And then eliminate within the village.
That's correct. That's what they want.
Yep.
How, so explain to me how two oh five is, uh, covered on Homics Road.
Two oh five.
Two oh five, two oh five is what, after you turn right, going down to two twenty.
Yep.
Well, that's not.
In the agreement.
Then it's not in that paragraph.
And then you, you also have the fact that in paragraph one, I don't have it in front of me. It describes it from two oh three down Homics Road to Eagles Next Road, and it's actually going down Oak Lane to Homics Road, to Eagle Next Road.
Eagle Knowles.
Eagle Knowles Road, forgive me. I, I mean, these are technical things that, you know, you know, have come to light. But they should have been covered and they need to be covered. If, you know, I'm, I'm not comfortable, uh, as one person of excluding Eagle Knowles Road, but if everybody else is, that's fine. I'm not. I think it's unfair to those residents and say, we'll worry about it later. Recently, we've, we, uh, allowed, or what the then-village engineer was going to allow a private line to be put in, uh, on Taylor's Lane that would be dedicated, at the end, dedicated to the village that others could hook up to, but it would be a private line from one house to the public sewer. We've done that in, you know, that, that eliminated the problem of doing separate lines for each house, which was done on Gresham Point Road.
Okay.
I, I'm not trying to delay it, I'm just trying to get it right, which, which I think is right.
We're usually, okay, that, that's fair enough, but, you know, it's gotta be consensus with the whole boardings is right. So it's on for tonight. I, I'm gonna make a motion, uh, to go back to just having Eagle Knowles. If, not Eagle Knowles, I'm sorry, Oak Lane, doesn't pass, then we'll go back to the drawing room. But it's almost seven o'clock and we got other things to get through. To be, or not to be, declaration of surplus property authorization to sell tasers. Police Department wants to get rid of its old tasers, they got new tasers. Uh, the issue is, you don't want to sell tasers, uh, just on the open market, as it were. So, Jerry, am I right? They want to, they want to do.
That's correct.
Private sale.
So it's a, it's a dedicated vendor that would purchase these tasers.
I think this is also what we do with, uh, old firearms that the village has. Procedure in the same vendor. You know, this on a, the old, I think we got rid of the AR-15s a while back, and this is how they did it. Does anybody have any problems with this?
No.
Do see, replacement of two damaged police vehicles. Uh, we had a police vehicle that was involved in an accident and a police vehicle that had a fire. Uh, insurance covers small portion of it. Uh, but the, uh, vehicles need to be replaced. Jerry, am I wrong?
That's correct, Mayor. Insurance covers probably twenty-five percent of it, so, and they're well-used vehicles, you know. Aside from the fact that one was smashed and one burned down.
You're told, right? Insurance totaled them up?
Yeah.
Good. Does somebody have any questions with this?
No.
Concerns? No. Okay, down-to-earth farmers' market.
I was gonna say, actually, uh, we'll be buying a hybrid police vehicles, if approved, for the first time.
Yeah.
And I know we'll, we probably have to, actually, it's not a, it's, it's a happy on that end. On the other end, we'll be using another hundred thousand from our surplus, so that gets us to nine hundred thousand. So that's gets us into a little turf, but I think, uh, you know, we will have to vote for that later on. But, uh, you know, I just wanted to raise that because several years ago, we talked about hybrid vehicles for the police, and everybody said, can't be. It's impossible, and now, now the world is changing very fast, so.
You're right.
Right.
Yeah, I remember that too, thank you. You're absolutely right. Okay, what the heck, are we? So everyone's arrived with that? Down-to-earth farmers' market, Jerry?
Down-to-earth farmers' market, we had a contract for multiple years for them to be inside um, and utilize the Blue Room and areas of the pavilion. That's a no-go anymore. So we've revised it. They want to, um, they want to utilize the outside pavilion field area, and we will have, um, outdoor bathrooms for them, which of course will be sanitized, and the fee structure changes a little bit. So we have a flat daily fee of three hundred dollars for them to operate the farmers' market, um, outdoors using ten-by-ten tents for their vendors, uh, during the months of January, February, March, part of April.
I think that's great.
Will the fee cover the cost of the, um, porta toilets?
Uh, yeah, we, we know, well, there won't be, um, the, we will have, um, either our toilets or portable toilets, and it'll cover, the three hundred dollar fee was set so we can cover all of our costs, including staff coming in and, and operating.
All right.
Yeah, not just that, yeah.
Okay, good.
It, let, the last time that, uh, we had them, they were running trucks down the, uh, from the road to the pavilion. You gonna allow that again or not?
That's prohibited. That's prohibited because we're not going to make the same mistake twice on that one.
Okay, that's great.
And they're actually closer now because they can load right off of the road, um, which we will close off to try to assist them in the early morning hours. Because they'll be, you know, closer towards the road now, using the field instead of using the building. Yeah.
Um, okay. Okay, uh, West Coast Joint Water Works, no, I'm sorry, opposition to Dan's kind of power plant buildup. They want to build a power plant, uh, upon the Hudson there that, uh, will use natural gas and diesel. You know, and I'm sure most of you share this concern that I have, uh, that the best thing to do with carbon emissions right now is to keep them in the ground. Uh, we really can't afford almost any more carbon emissions to be allowed into our atmosphere. The world is rapidly warming, uh, more rapid than they were even talking about a couple of years ago. Uh, so this, this, uh, resolution would, uh, ask that that plant not be built and to find, uh, renewable en- energy, uh, alternatives. Uh, and it's something that a lot of municipalities and counties are doing. Does anybody have any questions or concerns or would like to talk about it, please feel free?
Just want to make sure that we have the resolution that, uh, the Committee for the Environment endorsed, which is not the same as the original one that was sent to us. They did some modification and, uh, I think some substantive improvement to it. Wasn't secret.
You sent that today, Dan, right?
Yes, I sent that today. So what, whatever that, whatever that one is, make sure that that's the one that's used.
What we'll do is we'll read that and, uh, record and ask them what we'll vote on. Fair enough?
Yes. Yep.
Everybody up? I'm sorry, does somebody have any questions, concerns about that? What me? Two F, West Coast Joint Water Works Project, this is to build a booster pump station up by Ry Lake. We have, uh, an extensive memo from, uh, uh, from, uh, West Coast Water Works about it. Uh, does anybody have any questions or concerns? The joint project. Hopefully, they're coming on the button, okay? Two I, Contract Twenty Twenty-Dash-Three, I and I remediation. Uh, Jerry, you want to talk about this?
That's still under review, Mayor. Um, that is for the remediation work that will be performed based on the investigation from, um, Areas Eight, Eleven, Thirteen, Fourteen, that were previously investigated with our contractor, uh, Arcatis. But that's still under review. Um, we were just able to clear up one bit issue and, um, just the other day, so we'll have that ready for a subsequent meeting.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I say, can I, can I, Tom, can I ask a question?
Sure, sure.
Questions? Actually, um, on, we have a bunch of people who I think it looks like are here for the walking safety assessment, so if we're not gonna get to it tonight, maybe we should make it clear and let them know that we're.
Why don't we get to that, and that'll be the last thing we do probably?
Well, there's one other one, and it's the waiver for the residency requirement for the court clerk, because I think that Jerry and Danielle are waiting on that to execute some other stuff.
Where is that? I don't see it.
It's, it's on Old Business, it's L, and it's been on for a while. So it's one L. Yep.
Okay, let's get that.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, providing a waiver of residency requirement for court clerk. Jerry, you want to talk about this for a second?
Sure. So originally, this was put on, uh, because we have an employee, um, in the, um, in the court that potentially, um, would have been interested in the court clerk position, which was Bonnie Castorellis' former position. Um, but she does not live in the, um, in the village. Uh, we currently have a waiver of residency for the manager, the clerk treasurer, and, um, the, uh, one other, Dan Sarnoff, help me out. Oh, Assistant Court Clerk.
Yeah.
But the court clerk has to live in the village, and we don't see a reason why. Um, it opens up the pool of, uh, of applicants and potential great employees that could come to work for the village. So that's why we're asking for that, to, um, basically look exactly the same as the Assistant Court Clerk residency waiver right now.
That is not on for the regular meeting, but we can put it on in two weeks.
Yep.
Is everybody all right? We're putting that on in two weeks?
Yes, I'm fine, as long as it doesn't tie up Jerry, because I, I haven't followed it, but I know they've been trying to hire some staff.
Is that okay, Jerry, two weeks?
Two weeks will be good, that's as fast as we can get it on.
Would today be better?
Do you want us to add it tonight?
Would today be better?
I don't think we have the draft public local law prepared yet.
Well, yeah, we don't have any of the work done on it, so I can give it to you and.
Work you gotta do, we'll get it.
Yeah, we'll get it done.
Please. Max charges?
Thank you very much. Uh, thanks for pointing that out, Nora.
Welcome.
Uh, okay. We have twelve minutes left, and we have folks here, uh, who presented a petition and who have advocated strenuously, uh, for, uh, traffic safety measures. Uh, so I think that, uh, everybody, has everybody had a chance? I mean, we're gonna talk about the whole walking, uh, safety, but has everybody had a chance to see the petition?
Yes.
Yes. I, I've been down there a few times, and I can actually see both sides of the coin. I, I, I can see why, the Traffic Commission, uh, might have been reluctant to put a stop sign there, but I can also see, you know, especially when there's, uh, a lot of cars parked, uh, the concern, especially, uh, on English, where it really becomes a two-way, that's a one-way. And if you're coming from Holstead and you're on a bike or something and you're going down, you're going downhill. And, uh, people making that turn, especially if there's cars parked, aren't gonna see you. Uh, so the concern was to put a stop sign, uh, there and, uh, hopefully ameliorate some of that concern. Also, we're taking out, uh, parking where the access to the, uh, the parks, where the park entrances at that kind of cross-section there. So I, I can understand why they want to do it, uh. So has, has, has anybody else had a chance to go down there and take a look at it themselves, or?
Yeah.
I've been there many times.
Yep.
I think that the residents are, are, have a good case. I think it's warranted. I think the, the two-part, uh, stop signs and some reductions in the parking would make it safe. Uh, I've been there when there's been very close calls, including cars not going traveling at legal speeds of under twenty-five miles an hour and almost colliding.
It's twenty-five miles an hour on some streets, seems like eighty.
Yeah.
But that's why, that, that's why I think you need the stop signs, and that's why I think you need to clear some of the parking from the park.
Right.
Opens, it opens the, that enclave up into a safe approach. That'll, people going to and from the parks and on the, you know, into and from the residences. I think it's, um, it, it's a really valid approach to life.
Um, I would just ask that everyone, if you've looked at the, um, walking safety assessment report, it really lays out where the parking places would be eliminated, and it also indicates where shouldn't, some striping should be painted. The, um, the assessment report also talks about an additional stop sign that they highly recommend on Franklin and English. So, you know, the, the stop signs at the corner of, you know, at, at the park, those, those are one issue. But I think the assessment also talks about some other really important, um, traffic calming measures. Um, the, the thing that would cost a little more is adding the ADA compliant ramps for bicycles to enter the park. And I don't know whether we want to, I don't even think we have a budget, how much that would cost, do we, Jerry? The ADA, the bike ramp, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I could easily, uh, share with the board tomorrow what it would cost to do an ADA rant, because we just finished a hundred of them last year. Um, so I could provide some basic cost.
Okay.
Um, but, but as far as getting it done quickly, concrete, we're going out of concrete season, not into concrete season.
Right, and, and that may be, you know, the report talks about that as more of an intermediate-range goal. Um, the striping and the removal of parking places and the addition of at least one stop sign at Franklin and English, I think are measures that would be, that would help quite a bit.
There's no Franklin in English.
Now, where did I see that in the report?
English Park.
English, but no, there was another stop sign that was in the report on.
Well, the one the neighbors want?
English Place and Franklin Avenue. It's, it's on page three.
That's up, that's up further.
Yeah, that, they included that as part of this report and part of their safety assessment, and, and that was, um,
But English Place and Franklin, that's on the other side of Holstead?
Right.
That, that, that's, that's further, that's, that's not where the park intersects there.
I know, I'm just, I'm just going by the recommendations in the report. Because, um, that section was added. There, there was some dispute, dispute about whether that should be added, but it was added. And this is, I mean, one of the rare instances in which installation of a stop sign, um, is strongly recommended there.
Okay, well, we, we could take that into consideration too, but right now, I think what the, the residents were advocating for, and I, and I talked to, uh,
I know.
Uh, who started the petition, and they don't want two stop signs anymore, they just want the one at Park and English. Uh, going toward English, if you're heading toward English on Park, uh, at the corner there, it doesn't make sense to put one on English. It just makes sense to put the one on Park. Uh, but, you know, we, we could further confer with them. Uh, and, and I, I'm gonna let one of them talk because she started the petition. Her name is, uh, Christie Luciano. What, we, we get Miss Luciano here? Boggy?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone, for letting me have a moment to talk.
Kelly, the, the stop sign on Franklin is a kind of a separate issue. We covered it in the walking tour because we were on English already. That was, you know, strongly recommended and down the line, but no, it's not tied into this particular problem. I mean, my neighbors and I were talking about it and it really doesn't. Make sense to only put one on Park and not on English as well, because the problem is from both directions. It's a two-way, one-lane street, no matter which way you're coming. Tom, you and I had an opportunity to look at it together and, you know, I definitely pointed out how the hill takes you down on English. Toward the park. But again, because of, you know, there, there's no real entrance right now, other than people's driveways. Kids are riding in the street right up until that intersection. So to have the two stop signs, I think is really crucial.
I, I don't see how the one on English works, to tell you the truth. I, I, I don't see. It, it just.
I mean, do, I don't necessarily think it's as important as the one on Park. But I do think that if kids are riding their bikes to the park and don't pull into my neighbor's driveway where there is the cutout right now, then they're in the middle of the intersection as well.
But there, there won't be those parking spots there. I'm looking at the map.
So as long, I mean, I guess as long as it could all happen simultaneously, then that would eliminate some of the problem. If kids can keep toward the left coming down Park to not need one on English.
It, it, that, to me, is just too much, because it's just, it's just, you're gonna, you're gonna get a lot of right-of-way problems there.
Sure.
If you're coming down English, you can't make a right, right?
No, you can only make a left. Right.
So it's like a continuation. I, I, I would propose that we, we start with the one on Park.
I think that would be a good place to start.
And take away the spots in front of. You know, where the, there's really, they're really not spots anyway.
Right.
You know what I'm talking about, where the entrance is.
Right, people just make them spots.
Yes. The mayor has done that a lot.
It's all right. So yeah, if we could start with one on Park and then striping done around the corner. To allow for our cars to hug the side as well as kids to hug the bikes on the side. And then maybe we can reevaluate it after a little while and see if the other one is still needed. Or if it solves the problem, that would be, I guess, the most ideal. There are over, I think there are a hundred and thirteen signatures on our petition right now. A lot of people feel very strongly about this. So we've been at meetings ever since July and I hope this is the last one. Not that I don't like joining you, but.
You don't?
I mean, it's been a long night. I know you all feel it too.
Oh, and we're just getting started. You have no idea.
You have, you have another hand up here? You wanna?
Alana?
Hi there, can you hear me? Okay, um, so I do think two stop signs are necessary and I'll tell you why. You know, the kids coming down English represent about ten homes. The kids coming down Park Avenue represent about hundreds of homes. So you have kids coming from the other side of Halsted. There's a, there's a, there's a crosswalk on Florence, so they come over, you know, to, to Florence. And then they head down Park Avenue. So there's hundreds of kids coming down Park Avenue. Imagine flying down Park Avenue in the center of the street and having a car curving around from English into Park. At that crux of the curve, it's, it's a blind turn. At the crux of the curve, the kid is going to get hit. I have, I have seen so many close calls. If you're gonna put up a stop sign, if you're only gonna choose one stop sign, then put it up. You know, stopping the cars from English. Those, those are the residents who live on that street. There are what, ten, ten houses on that street? Let them stop and then, you know, I, I hate to choose which kid is going to be the detriment. Really put up the two stop signs. If you're gonna put one up on Park, then you have all the more reason to put one up on English. English is preventing ten, ten homes. Cars coming down English, turning into the child on Park. Versus, you know, the cars on Park Avenue turning into the child on English. This is, this is, this is a curve that needs two, two stop signs. You know, I was driving to Mamaroneck Avenue the other day and I, I drove by Honda Bobs. I mean Honda Bobs, they have a stop sign. There, there's not even. There's not even a fraction of the number of kids on bikes at Honda Bobs that there is at the corner of English and Park. There needs to be two stop signs. That's my sense. And if there's one stop sign, then, then have it stop the cars on English.
I, I, I don't, I just don't see the two stop signs. I don't see. But, but, you know, how about this? How about we ask the traffic consultant, what's the best place to put a stop sign at that intersection?
You mean Matt Carmody?
Yeah. And we follow his direction and we put the stop sign there. And if he says two stop signs, then we'll put two stop signs. But. But, but, but let's just start with, if you're gonna put a stop sign here, where would you put it? And if you need to, let us know. So we'll have them examine that intersection, raise stop signs. So that, that would be, you know, the, the way I think to, you know, and if he says. We put two stop signs. If he says you really need one here, this would be the best spot. And this is the reason why you don't need, what I'm saying is, you get a stop sign there, let's just figure out the best way to do it. With the traffic consultant. Is that fair enough?
I think that this has been going on for, for months and months and months, and my fear is that we now get, you know, Christie came to the traffic commission over the summer. I think this is her, her sixth or seventh call to the village. I mean, there's a point where it just becomes ridiculous.
Alana, Alana, you're here, you're here to get stuff done and I'm trying to get it done.
I agree, I agree. I mean. I'm just afraid that Matt's gonna come in and it's gonna be just another stonewall.
It won't be. Check back in two weeks.
I don't know, I, I've been there many times. I've seen the close calls. I happen to agree with Alana and Christie. I think it would be apropos to put the two stop signs in. It doesn't cost the village any significant amount of money. With the striping in, in the elimination of the, the parking that's outlined in, by the report. And I think. We're off and running. And we've solved a problem that's been there for a long time.
Yeah, I, I also think it's a blind, it's a blind corner because of the, of the, of the tree on the corner. As you're turning right onto English or left onto Park, so that makes the visibility even less. I'm not suggesting we get rid of the tree, but I think the double stop sign. Might just make, slow people down a little bit.
But let's ask, let's ask for a resolution to put the two stops in. This isn't something I want to. Let's just get it done then.
All right, you know, I just, I just want to be clear. I'd like all these assessments to stay on the work session agenda because we do have, you know, in addition to this petition, we have reports that have been done by professionals with, with hours upon hours of real solid, you know, look in the field and, and so I'm at, you know, and this isn't the only intersection that has pedestrians and kids in danger. There are a lot. So I would just ask that we keep this on the agenda and, and keep just making progress going through them.
Okay, that's fair enough.
I agree.
I'll second that because the reports are amazing and.
They really are.
Hold on.
This is real, real expertise works and, and expertise from experts and from our real residents involved. So I, I was impressed, very impressed how other games, so thank you all that are involved.
Sarnoff? Yes, could you prepare that resolution for two weeks? Ready?
Thanks, great.
See you two weeks from now.
Or stay for the regular meeting.
Oh, please stay.
Please stay.
Okay. Thank you, thank you citizens. We are going to adjourn.
Ten minutes?
This work session. We're gonna come back in fifteen minutes. All fresh and ready to go. I need a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved. Second.
Hi.
Hi.
How long, Tom?
Fifteen, he said fifteen.
Okay, seven thirty-five.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay. There you go. So you're not going to see very much behind you.
Very good.
All right. Chris Leahy on you? Yes. Okay. Are we on volume? Yeah. Is everybody ready?
Yep. Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the November twenty-third Village of Mamaronek Regular Board of Trustees meeting. We met both in executive and in work session earlier, and we are now coming back to the main game. I need a motion to open this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge of allegiance.
Since like the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All righty. First item on the agenda tonight. A presentation to longtime Village employees. And I see one of them is preparing for retirement by growing a beard already. The first person on the agenda tonight that we congratulate is Chief Christopher Leahy. Chief Leahy has been with the Village of Mamaronek for twenty-seven years. He's been in law enforcement for over thirty years. Both of the gentlemen tonight that were saying goodbye to I have known for a very, very long time. I have. You know, there are days in your life that are kind of burned into your memory. And when I think of April fifteenth, two thousand and seven, there were many people whose images and what they did that day have burned into my memory. But Chief Leahy and at the time Chief Barry Castarella are two of the most important. They both went, I think the chief might have been a sergeant at the time. And I rode around with him for a couple hours. And I was with the chief at the the old hooks that we used as the command center that day. And that was probably the worst day the Village of Mamaronek had had in terms of sustained emergency that I remember. And both of these gentlemen gave a hundred and ten percent, as did so many people that day. But, you know, forever when I remember that day, now that we just passed the anniversary of the day John Kennedy was murdered, and the folks who are older than a lot of us, they remember that distinctly. I remember that day distinctly. It might not have made national headlines, but it was our it was all Waterloo, and you guys were there, and I'll never forget it. But just let me tell you a little bit about Chief Leahy. This is from a proclamation. One such individual is Chief Christopher Leahy, a twenty-seven-year employee of the Village of Mamaronek. An officer who served with distinction and established a legacy of leadership and accomplishment in public service. So great that he has inspired thousands of residents and coworkers. And whereas Chief Leahy was first assigned to the patrol unit until nineteen ninety-seven, when he was reassigned and became an inaugural member of the bicycle unit. And during this time, he also became a certified dare instructor and taught at the Mamaronek Avenue School. And whereas among his many accomplishments and distinctions, then Lieutenant Leahy was chosen to attend the FBI National Academy at Quantico in two thousand and ten. And shortly after his graduation, he was promoted to the rank of chief. And whereas in his time as chief, Chris Leahy has led the department, taken great pride in the men and women of the Village Mamaronek Police Department. And consistent with his career of service, has implemented a community policing efforts, working with the community to guide and educate residents about public safety policies and procedures. And whereas on the occasion of his retirement, it is proper and appropriate that Chief Christopher Leahy be recognized by the community for the positive impact he has made toward the betterment of generations of village residents. Now therefore I, Mayor Thomas A. Murphy, on behalf of the Village of Mamaronek residents, hereby express the deep gratitude, esteem with cheese held by the community. And I personally thank him on the occasion of his retirement, for his lifetime of service he has given to the village. Chief, I wish you nothing but happiness and health in whatever you do. It was a pleasure knowing you as a man and serving with you as an official at the Village of Mamaronek. Anybody aboard, anything you'd like to add at this time to our chief and saying goodbye to him?
Wish we could do this in person.
Me too.
Me too. Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please, Chris.
So first and foremost, it's been an absolute honor to work with the men and women of the Village of Mamaronek Police Department. No doubt in my mind, the greatest police force around. I've met many wonderful people and made many fantastic friends over the years, to which I'm very grateful for. It's been an absolute privilege to serve the friendly village, the residents, and the many boards who have sat over the last thirty years. I'm leaving the department in very capable hands of Sandra DeRosa. I wish her well. I wish you all well, and thank you all for the well wishes. Mayor, our relationship, our friendship goes back decades. We've done many, many, many good things for the village over the years, and I thank you for your support over the years. I just, I want to thank everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Yes, truly a pleasure. If you come by Village Hall tomorrow, there'll be a beautiful plaque for you.
I thoroughly appreciate that. I didn't realize that that was coming, but thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you all.
This is what you do.
Oh, just one other thing. The beard, the beard is a fundraiser. Check the website. Anyone who can donate, we're donating to colorectal cancer. All of the officers that you see with a beard, we've all donated for this cause.
Okay, not uncovered. Thank you, chief. All right, the next gentleman. That we're going to honor tonight. Someone I first met years ago in two thousand and one, when I was first appointed to the Village of Mamaronek Board of Trustees. And he told me, anything you need, Ben, you just ask me. And you know what? He was true to his word these past twenty years. Anything I needed, and I asked him, he did with pride and with, you know, gusto. You know, Barry Castarella puts his heart into everything he does. He wears his heart on his sleeve. He loves deeply, and he cares deeply. And, you know, he has given so much to this community. You know, in the past few years I've been mayor, you know, I go to work very early. And I often drive by Harbor Island Park, sometimes before six o'clock in the morning. And I'll see something out in the fields. And I'll think, do we have bear? Then I look and I said, no, it's Barry. At the crack of dawn, looking at something. Because he cares so much about those parks. And the parks, you can tell by looking at them. Somebody really cares about them, and somebody really loves them. Barry grew up here. His heart is here. His family is here. His home is here. You couldn't ask for a nicer guy. And I got something to read for you, Barry. One such individual is Barry Castarella. Lifelong resident and thirty-seven-year employee of the Village of Mamaronek. Man who has established a legacy of leadership and accomplishment, so great that he has inspired generations of residents and coworkers. Barry Castarella currently serves as general foreman of the Parks Department. And over the past decade, has dedicated himself to improving the village facilities, enhancing the recreational experience and quality of life for tens of thousands of residents. And among his greatest accomplishment, he has built new playgrounds to serve the children of the village and provide stewardship of Harbor Island Park, the jewel of the Village of Mamaronek. And in addition to his employment with the Village of Mamaronek, Barry Castarella is a forty-year member of the Old Volunteer Village of Mamaronek Fire Department, having served as a chief within the department from two thousand and five to two thousand and eight. And in inspiration to hundreds of fellow firefighters he has served with over the past decades. And in his time as fire chief, Barry Castarella led the department in its response on April fifteenth, two thousand and seven, Norristown, where they responded to over one thousand one hundred calls for service in a single day. As a general foreman, he has also led the response and recovery in the Harbor Island Park in the aftermath of Superstorm Standing. And on the occasion of his retirement, it is proper and appropriate that Barry Castarella be recognized by the community for the positive impact he has made toward the betterment of generations of village residents. Now I therefore, now therefore I, Mayor Thomas A. Murphy, on behalf of the residents of the Village of Mamaronek, hereby express the deep gratitude and esteem which is held in by the community. And personally thank him on the occasion of his retirement, for the lifetime of service he has given the village. Barry, I'm going to miss you. And I know you're still going to be around. But I meant everything I said. You gave your heart and your soul to this place. And I appreciate it. And, you know, I'm sure we're going to remain friends. And I'm sure we're going to pass each other and get coffee with each other when we can sit down and hug each other again. But I'm really going to miss you, Barry. Barry, you want to say a few words, Mr. Kestrel?
Sure. Mayor, I'd like to thank you very much. It was a great honor, a great speech. Also, I would like to thank the mayor, the board, the trustees, former mayors, former board members that I have worked under all these years. I'd like to thank the village manager for what he's done also. All I can say is I am a little upset that I'm retiring. And I'm going to miss all you people. I just worked under a lot of great people. I learned a lot of good stuff. The person that's taking over right now while I'm out, I think he's a great person to do the job that he's going to do. And it's really nothing else I can say. I'm just really, I'm really upset that I'm retiring. But I got to move on to a new chapter in my life, and the villages got to move on in the chapter of their life. And all I can say is thank you to everybody. Nora, I wanted to say on behalf of working as general foreman of parks and the park commission, and you being on that board and leading it, I think it's a great job, and that you're working very hard in that, doing that job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know we have Assemblyman Otis here tonight. And Steve, I think you have a proclamations here that I have for the gentleman, but please, Steve.
Well, it's great to join you and Chief Leahy and Barry to be here, even on Zoom to mark your retirement. And let me just make a few comments. Chief Leahy, a great career for the Village of Mamaronek. And one thing that I know is you're always a steady, calm hand, regardless of what was going on. Your leadership was an important force for the police department and keeping things level-headed. And a great career. I also bring for both of you, but I will start with the chief. Hello, and congratulations from former mayor Susie Oppenheim, who I told I was going to come on this Zoom. And she said to congratulate you, and also thanks highly of the work that you did. But you worked your way up through the department to lead the department, and you left it in good hands. Congratulations. We have a proclamation from the State Assembly to We have a proclamation from the State Assembly to mark the occasion and, and good luck in your next chapter of your, your career and your, your, uh, what you do next. But you did great by the village of Mamaronek, people of Mamaronek very lucky to have of your years of service. So congratulations, Chief.
Thank you very much.
And Barry, I, uh, I also bring a, a hello from Susie, uh, who you've known for a long time and, and was mayor when we started working for the village. And, uh, she also sends congratulations. I, I think that, uh, what you've done. In terms of the village, you've done everything and, uh, through, uh, Public Works and then your leadership in the Parks Department. And I, I, I think people understand that, that, that your belief was in the Parks Department. It's there, parks are there for people and families to enjoy the parks. And that doesn't happen just by showing up. It happens with all the preparation. The Parks Department does to make sure that the events, the activities go on and you're always there. I actually don't think it's an official Mamaronek event. Is in attendance and, and, uh. And I think you're still gonna be showing up at things, so we'll still have official events. But forty years of service and really great dedication in terms of the improvements to the parks. The, the facilities and the care that goes into doing that right. You are, uh, uh, have the benefit of knowing you've made a lot of kids and a lot of adults very happy. Proclamation from the State Assembly is also waiting for you as well, but, uh, an honor to know both of you gentlemen. And, um, to be here to help recognize your, your great, great service for the friendly village. The Mamaronek was very lucky to have all of that service and, uh, I'll say one last thing. In the two thousand and seven flood that the mayor alluded to. I was down on the ground in Mamaronek after that and the, the days following that and some of the other flood events and. People in America may or not, may, may or may not realize. That in most flood events, the village of Mamaronek was the worst-hit community in all of Westchester County. And, uh, the damage, the safety issues, it was significant and other places got hit. No one got hit as bad as Mamaronek and, uh. The, the fact that people kept it together and, uh, you know, as we rebuild today. In terms of hopefully, uh, a, a plan to make sure that those kinds of events can't happen. On the ground, Barry was there, Chief Leahy was there in his pre-chief days. But, uh, the, the, the village staff did a, a, a lot to protect people and property and, uh. Those are, like, those are the moments of truth. Congratulations, uh, to both of you for great careers and, and many moments of, of truth and, and dedication to the village.
I'd like to thank you very much, sir. I really appreciate that and all you've done for us in the Fire Department and in two thousand and seven. I thank you a lot.
Yeah, Victor, go ahead.
Yes, I, I just need a minute, a minute, uh, thirty seconds each for each. And, and I, I still, two thousand and seven is, is, is in my, fresh in my mind because I had recently moved to the village. And it's, it still doesn't fade and I hope it doesn't because we still have to work on that, but the thirty seconds. I start with Chief Leahy, Chief Leahy, and actually. One day this will be over, so I'm thinking now when I leave office. I, you guys will, I'll remember you of my best, one of some of my best things I've done here with you. With the Chief Leahy, uh, promoting our officers or hiring officers. That was some of the most rewarding experiences here. I thank you for bringing the best you could and I'll remember that always. And for Barry, you know, we as trustees very, sometimes we don't, we don't have so many opportunities to talk with, with the, uh, workers, with the laborers. And just by chance with, with you and your staff, I had a chance to do that a couple of times. And I will never forget that, that I've learned so much from the village to appreciate it more and to love it more. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, trustee.
Well said, Victor.
Gentlemen. I wish you nothing but health, happiness in the future. You're two good guys. You know, you earned every dollar you're gonna collect. Bonjour, luck.
Thank you, man. Thank you, board. Thank you, Jeff.
And maybe we can do this again when the pandemic is over and everybody can be in the courtroom.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you very much, everybody. Barry, congratulations.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, the, uh, the next item on the agenda is actually not on the agenda, it's, it's just left off, but it's, uh, public comments. Glenn has his hand up.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
I would just like to add, uh, Barry wasn't, uh, one-man show here in the village. He may have been the star. But between his brothers, wives and the rest of the family. The play he was in had a large. A, 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 a very large cast and every one of them was a plus with their volunteerism to this village. While as we're thanking Barry as an individual, as a village employee, I believe the entire family believes our. Should have our thanks for over thirty years of service in the village. Okay. Onto the fun stuff. We, uh. Have, uh, underbills coming in, more legal bills. At this point, our legal budget is only gonna have one hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in it. And I don't believe in, we've even gotten a retainer left, uh, in for the T-Bird case. You're gonna have to do some analysis of where your lea-, your legal costs are going. And your overall costs. We have a revenue control, uh, report and we have an expense report. And right off the bat, you have a two million dollar difference. Between what we are, uh, spending this year and our revenue this year. I know six hundred thousand of it is coming out of the, uh, general account. Towards it, where's the other one point four million coming? And then if you go further into the report. Our revenues are gonna probably fall anywhere from a half a million to one point five million short. You can look under fi-, fines and forfeitures. You can look under, uh, parking at the railroads. Parking, um. The amount of money that we're gonna be getting from the state is questionable. Acorn should probably be eliminated from both sides of the budget because we didn't get anything for acorn. We have no spending for acorn. It's two thirty-seven. You should probably just either zero out or eliminate the category completely. Uh, cuz you have, you, you, you have received nothing, you're getting nothing. Police details are weighed down. If you actually do the analysis, sales tax may be up. Uh, according to Jerry, we got a good sales tax number. On the expenditure side. You're looking at going over your expenditures on your legal significantly. Uh, you have to look at the number of cases and start to, uh, come up with, you know. Some cost analysis of what that's gonna cost you over the next, uh, seven months. And the other one is I see we're spending fifteen thousand dollars. On support for sorceresses, legal support for sorceresses. And I did look up, uh, the amount of sorceresses that were filed against the town. I can't break down how many are against the village. But in the last month and a half against the filing date, there's a hundred and ten of them. How many of them are sorceresses, uh, that also include the village of Mamaronek? But I did see Hampshire there and I did see Avalon Bay there amongst others. So that's something that maybe you should have the, um. Uh, Budget Committee look at is. Find out how many sorceresses we're looking at against the village of Mamaronek and how does that affect our budget? But right, right now. Like I said, structurally, your budget is structured, uh, to be two million dollars in deficit. Six hundred thousand, I know was originally planned to come out of the general fund. Where the other one point four, and then if you even look at, uh, today's, uh, uh, agenda. You're moving a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to help your, uh, central, uh, communication system, which is over budget. And then you got eighty thousand out of a hundred thousand dollars cost for, to replace two damaged police cars. That you're also taking out of the general budget. That's another two hundred thousand. Add that to last week when you took money out for the fire department. So you're gonna, you guys are gonna really have to start crunching your numbers because the numbers will look fine. We're, we're about to start to get our, um. You have property tax numbers. But, but come, uh, March, your average spending is somewhere between seven hundred and nine hundred thousand dollars a week. Depending on how the bills come in. Basically, in the, somewhere in the middle of March, all the, uh, income that you are going to be getting from. Your second property tax runs out. And if you wait until then. You're gonna, you're gonna be in a real pickle because even if you lay people off, it really doesn't do you much good because there's only three months left. So. You have to defer trade, shade trees.
Glenn?
Whatever you have to do, you're gonna have to go through, you're gonna have to go through th- those accounts and start really look. Looking for where you need, uh, find savings or you're gonna have to commit another million dollars. Out of the, uh, uh, general.
Thank you.
But you're gonna have to actually.
You're not listening. You, you, the, the time limit on the, this is five minutes. Next is Gisella.
Mayor, mayor, sorry, may I just interject very briefly? Because, uh, I, I just wanna help. I don't, I don't mean to, to correct, uh, Glenn, but I think he meant when he was saying from the general fund. He meant from fund balance.
Yes, I know.
Right? And I, I know that's what he meant, uh, because he's been following that very closely and just, just to make sure, uh, we, we are, we are following this very closely. Thank, uh, thank you, Glenn. You always make very pointed remarks, so I just wanted to help you just, just, I think you were, we're trying to, you, you, it's fun balance, uh, that you were talking about. Thank you.
Uh, Giselle, Giselle, um, Gisella. Marac, Maracquin.
Gisella Maracquin, hi.
Oh, I'm getting closer every time.
I think so, yeah. Um, good evening all. Um, I'm calling again, you know, I, I'm glad I followed, um, that previous caller who really looks at all the stuff. And I'm just calling about things I've been calling, uh, over a couple of weeks. I just. I guess my question is, you know, a few weeks ago, I know someone else called in questioning around, um, our, you know, village taxpayers. Paying for Cindy Goldstein's Article seventy-eight lawsuits. We look at some of the bills, um, uh, over the past couple of months. Um, we see that there's been thirty thousand in March and April more, um, to, uh, attorney Leventhal. And these strictly say Article seventy-eight preparation. Um, and another in September, uh, by the same attorney was another nine thousand dollars. Um, so I just want clarity as to why we keep stating and particularly you, mayor, why the village, um. You keep saying on behalf of the village that we don't pay for her lawyers for the Article seventy-eight lawsuit, um, when it really does.
My understanding, we don't, I will check on that and if we did, we will claw it back.
So these bills could be wrong and somebody could be making a mistake or we're, or you're stating that it's not.
I'm not prepared to say that. I'm prepared to say I'm gonna look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Who's Village of Mamaronek? I don't know. They didn't put their name. I don't know what that is. Go to Kevin, go to Village of Mamaronek and see what it is. Village of Mamaronek?
Ask them, you. Take off mute. I did. Unmute yourself.
Okay. My name is Anthony Cordy. I live at one thirty-six West Boston Post Road. I would like to know. Over the past years. You took the post road, you made a snow emergency road. Then you turned around, took a parking space away because you deemed it was a dangerous condition. However, it took eight months to move the sign, no parking to the corner. Now I understand you want to put parking meters. On the, I guess, the north side of the Boston Post Road. I believe it's a hardship for some of the people that live here. They're, they have the pandemic and they have to stay home. And now you put parking meters and they'll have to, I guess, feed the meter or I don't know what they'll do. Also, business is here. I lost, uh, two commercial buildings. Couple of tenants, couple of tenants don't pay rent. It's gonna be a hardship. There's, uh, no parking meters. When you go underneath the bridge in the Washingtonville section, section on the Mamaronek Avenue. And, um, uh. So I, I, if you wanna make money, I don't know why, why, why just start over here. I'd like to thank you. I, I hope you reversed your decision to put parking meters. On, on my post road, especially opposite the, the, the stores and, and the tenants that live here. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Kevin Chung.
Hi there. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking my, uh, my call here.
Yes, sir. How did we lose you? John? We, we lost you, sir. Try Daria, we'll come back to Mr. Chung.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Um. Yeah, so I, I'm Daria. I. Um, and I, I think I've, I've called in a couple of times, so I'm back. Um, I, I actually wanted to, um, ask the mayor a question. Um, I remember a few weeks ago, a man, I, I think his name was Glenn. Which means it was the man who just spoke a couple of people before again. He called and asked how many lawsuits the village is fighting that aren't covered by insurance. And you said that you would have to get back to him on that. So I wanted to ask what you ended up finding out and also if the village's insurance premiums have gone up as a result of all of these. Lawsuits that it seems a lot of people tonight are asking about.
I don't have a question to answer that right now. I'm sorry.
Okay, um, who at Village Hall is responsible for tracking these insurance premium expenses?
You can foil the clerk treasurer's office.
Okay, so that, that would be the. That would be who to reach out to, to figure out what, if anything, has been done to, to keep these expenses in check.
That would be the, the officer contact.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Chung, another shot.
Other, can everyone hear me now?
Yes, you, you, you just dropped off before. We could hear you in the beginning and then dropped off.
Oh, okay. Uh, all right, anyway, thank you for taking my call. So I have a question as well, also related to the lawsuits that Mamaronek is fighting at the moment. But my question is specifically for you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that the village has recently hired a second law firm on the Hampshire project. The question is, why did we have to do that and, and how much is that gonna cost us in the long run for the next year?
I, I, I don't have a, a cost estimate and uh it, it, the, the, the board felt it was needed uh to give uh, to, to attend to certain issues and I'm not gonna talk about what issues because that would be divulging legal strategy.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jane Dorian. Hello, Jane. Unmute Jane.
Okay, got it. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, Mayor Tom Murphy and Village Board of Trustees, I'm Jane Dorian and I'm a resident of Oriental Gardens at 953 West Boston Post Road. I will speak briefly, followed by Oriental Gardens Board Member Ronald Zino. We are respectfully addressing you today because we are concerned that the longstanding tradition, more than 30 years of unlimited parking in front of our residents suddenly changed as of last month, October. This change in practice is the reason we sent you a petition on November 4th, signed by over 100 residents of Oriental Gardens. In this petition, we listed all the many compelling reasons why unrestricted parking is needed. I am not gonna repeat all of those reasons listed in the petition. I think the petition speaks for itself and I assume all of you saw it and read it. But we are simply asking for a return to the longstanding practice of unlimited parking in front of our residents. We are requesting that you uphold our right to park in front of our own residence with no time limit imposed. And I hope you will consider this and um our board member now Ronald Zino is going to address you with some additional comments.
Start the clock again. Yes, you know. Mr. Fino? Chino, is that it? Ron Chino? Zino, Zino, you, oh, sir?
Yes.
Go ahead, buddy.
Okay, I'm sorry. You know, we're both questioning the unfortunate decision to ticket individuals for parking in front of their own residence at 953 Boston Post Road. There was really no notice and as Jane said, it's been a longstanding tradition that we're allowed to park in front of it. Um, Jane mentioned that petition, so people feel very strongly. It's very inconvenient. And as you know, we're in the midst of the second phase of this horrible COVID pandemic. More people than ever are working from home, parents are homeschooling. Everyone is told to be sheltering in space, yet you're telling us to move our cars every 90 minutes, six days a week, which seems very unreasonable. You know, my personal opinion, living here for over 12 years, is no residential residence should have any parking restrictions imposed in front of their home. I'm sure you guys don't. Um, so I guess I'm requesting that this impractical and unpopular change be reconsidered because we don't know who benefits from this policy. So again, very quickly, please reconsider this issue. Kindly inform us when you do make a final decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Village Manager Barbarian, can I ask you a question? You're muted.
You did, Jerry.
You can ask me a question.
Thank you. Uh, so right now, it's, it, the law is 90-minute parking, right?
That's correct. That's most of Boston Post Road is 90-minute parking.
Okay, so if we, if, if we want to consider giving relief to that area, we should consider changing the parking regulations in that area.
Correct. You would basically abolish the 90-minute limit.
Okay. This is something that I, I might put on the agenda in the future, considering the parking limits in that area. I'm, I'm gonna go down and look at it further in the next couple of days. But I understand, I, I live on Rich Bell Road. So I understand how parking isn't a premium when you have an apartment. And we have restrictions, but it's only about opposite side of the street. Okay, all right. I hear you. Thank you. No other hands? Chino is probably the one.
All right. I can, Tom, I, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure, Nora.
So, um, base, what, so the enforcement started recently? So it hadn't, we'd had the law for a while, but the enforcement is new?
Well, it's not new. It's just that it wasn't being done.
Wasn't being enforced? So it's.
No.
Okay.
It wasn't being enforced and now it is.
Okay.
As it should be. And the other areas, there are areas very close to those apartments that do not have parking limits. That's directly across the street in front of the town center, going all the way up to the field, from the town center driveway up to the field. And in fact, many residents park their car and leave their car there. The entire time, they don't even move them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, okay, we get, uh, go to Gina Vine.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I just wanted to say two things. Uh, for everyone listening that with the parking issues, when I had done a foil uh and spoken to the postal office about the number of homes we have mail delivered to and then New York State has a listing of how many cars are registered to 10543. We had over two cars per household, basically, 2. something cars, which is a lot. And we have a lot of old buildings. We have a lot of new buildings that go up that don't have parking. And I'm just, I've mentioned this before. And I think that anyone that's a resident of this village should have an ability to park all the time because we don't know who the outsiders are. And I don't know how exactly this would work. I'd have to do some more research. But my son lived in Massachusetts in Boston and people had, sorry. Uh, people had permits that they paid for, for the year and they received a permit for their own car and a guest that could be there. You know, because, you know, you have elderly people, elderly people that come in to take help, care of them, help them out, whatever happens during the day, course of the day. And then you have people that park cars overnight. So I think that there should be a, a system looked at for resident permits. Even if it's $25 a year, like my son was paying. Uh, and then when we would go, we get, we would see him, they would give us the permit, we'd put it in our wish yields so we could park overnight and not be towed. Something like that might work for everybody, but the residents should come first. You know, and it's a very difficult time and it's very hard to find parking when you buy a co-op here. And I think that the neglect of the boards that allowed a lot to go up without allowing adequate parking has to be, you know, taken into consideration for everyone else that's here. Basically, that's it. Maybe a permit system. Thank you.
Thank you. Try Ron again.
Ron, unmute yourself. Hi, thank you. Uh, just one thing, Mr. Barbarian, I believe it was, that this may have been a law for a very, very long time. However, if you came to our building, in front of our building, there are two signs, let's say, one on the north side, one on the right. And there is an arrow that pointed away from the buildings, saying in essence, yes, you can park in front of the building. About a month ago, someone came and changed the sign so that it said you couldn't park in front of the building. So although it may have been a longstanding law, something, someone changed it in the past month because we were excluded. And that's what we're kind of fighting for. Are you familiar with that?
You weren't excluded. That sign that you're talking about, one, the direction of the arrow facing 953 was scratched off. And so the sign was manipulated, so we put up new signs.
Well, I'm not, I, I apologize, I don't, I, that I'm not aware of. I just know that for the 10 or 15 years.
You don't have to be aware of it. That's exactly what happened.
Okay, but for the 15 years I've been living here, that sign always read that way. So it's, it's interesting to hear what you say. I'm not doubting you, please. It's just new to all of us. But again, if you could reconsider, we'd love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dee Pickett? Mr. Pickett?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm, I'm the um, the owner of the house at 203 Homex and building the sewer that's going down Homex Road and connecting by the school.
Gotcha.
Um, and we've been, you know, at it now for a few months. We're, we're trying to make our final connection at the manhole and um, we're still waiting for approval. I, I listened earlier in on your working session and I, I appreciate the, the intricacies and detail and difficulty of, of, um, of getting something, an IMA like this done. But um, we have been, this is an issue that's been in front of you now for probably, I think we're first in front of you three years ago and we got our approvals probably two years ago. Um, and we've spent a lot of time and money, obviously, getting the sewer to this point. Um, I, I, I don't, I, I would just, if you could, just urge you to approve this IMA or at least let me make my final connection to the sewer because I've got about a week's worth of work left before the crew is done, at which point I'll either have to pay them to stand around and be idle or they're gonna leave and I'll have to pay them to come back. And it's already, as you can imagine, quite an expensive proposition. So if there was any way, I, I, I understand how difficult it is to get an IMA done because there's lots of different moving pieces. But if there was a way of just getting this last connection approved for me, I would, I would very much appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. I, I, I understand the urgency. Okay, okay, we're gonna go to the public hearings. I don't want a public hearing. The appointment authority for planning and zoning government. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to open this public hearing?
So, move.
Back it.
Before we call Roltz. Trustee Windsor?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay. This is appointment authority now, that, that this is really about, not the appointment authority, it's about the removal authority. Uh, and now the removal authority under New York state law rests with the, with the mayor. As far as I know, there's only been one instance in history of Village of Mamaronek where we had to even contemplate using this. We've argued this back and forth. I, I don't, I, 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 I honestly think uh that these hearings would go better with one person instead of five because I, I have seen hearings in front of lawyers with a panel of five mayor and trustees and it did not go well. Uh, that being said, at the time, we fixed that by adopting a law like this, that that law allowed for the appointment of a hearing officer. Now, at that point, with the police thing, the law had to allow, uh, the, the whole idea was to allow the, the appointment of a hearing officer, uh, not to change the removal authority. This is changing the removal authority to the whole board of trustees, which I don't know if it's a good idea, but I'm not, you know, that, that is not, you know, uh, my big issue with this, my big issue with this is I would hope that we could put a line in there uh saying, so that, you know, in a hundred years from now, if this is ever used, that uh the board of trustees could use a point to hearing officer to hear the case with the board being the decider after the uh hearing officer tries the case, as it were. And that's where I stand on this. Does the public want to speak or board members want to speak?
Yeah, I mean, I'm the one that proposed this and the reason I proposed it was because four years ago, I guess, just, just four years ago, this past November, the, there was a referendum that changed the appointment authority and that get, and that gave the appointment authority to the entire board of trustees for land use, for zoning and planning board members, not just the mayor. And at that time, it should have been harmonized because typically in New York state law, whoever appoints has the authority to remove. So this is really to harmonize, correct something that was changed four years ago and wasn't corrected. So that's, that's the reason that I proposed it. So um, I, you know, I think that it's unusual, I mean, theoretically, the mayor could remove someone and three of the, three or four other board members could vote to just simply reappoint them. So usually the, the appointing authority is, is, the, the appointing authority has the removal authority. So this is really just to correct an error from the referendum four years ago.
Okay.
Democracy, democracy isn't always smooth. I agree with you.
But I'd like to consider putting in a sentence about appointing hearing officer.
You know, Tom, I mean, we've, we've had several work sessions about this and I agree with you. I think the option of allowing the board to use a hearing officer makes a lot of sense. It's not requiring the board of trustees to use a hearing officer, but it allows them to appoint one if they want to. Um, in the work session, I was looking for the specific language, but I know that the line you're interested in adding, you know, would, would provide for the hearing officer to hold the hearing only, not to make the final decision, but just to hold the hearing itself. And, and I think it would be a good addition. It accomplishes, you know, the same result, harmonizing the law, which my memory um of the law and in its referendum when it passed, you know, was this, the same as Nora's understanding that the appointment and removal authority should be, should have been harmonized. It was an oversight. Um, but I do think in light of our experience and what we've seen in terms of how these hearings can get messy, the option of using a hearing officer to conduct the hearing, not to make the decision, but to conduct the hearing itself, might be helpful to a board and I'd like them to have that option explicitly stated in the law.
Good question to my colleagues. Last, last time we discussed this, we posed the question officially to the attorney and the attorney gave us, gave us a privileged and confidential memo. Uh, would you be okay making it a public?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Anybody else? Are we all in agreement?
Yes.
Sure.
That's fine.
Okay. Yes, because then, then, then thank you for that. Because the, the answer, uh, the answer to that actually was, was um that our attorney said, while he was not able to identify any decision on point, it appeared that the answer is yes to the question that the board of trustees may delegate uh that, the conduct of a hearing to, to, to a cert, to a hearing officer. So, so just to clarify, uh, as we stand now, that possibility exists. What I think the mayor and trustee Westrop are asking is that we just make it explicit. So it is, it's, it's not going, it's just making it present for, 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 so this happens in the future that that, that, that uh opportunity exists. Uh, well, who know what the law is at the time? But, 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 but uh, uh, there. I, I think that, that's your intention, just, just to highlight it, but, but that it's not necessary. So that's where we stand, correct?
That's right, Victor.
Yes, I, I, I would agree with most of what you said. Uh, I, I, I think that if we put it explicitly into the law, it warns a future board that they have that authority. Uh, because, you know, let, let's face it, you know, uh, okay, we, we had a referendum, right? And nobody thought about the removal authority because, you know, nobody was there about the removal. That never happened. You know what I mean? So at least this is a hint to our descendants, as it were, that you can do this. I mean, that, that was, you know, the last thing, the last law I proposed before I left being a trustee was the law to delegate uh the ability to have police hearings to a hearing officer. And the reason was, is that it was so debilitating uh to the board of trustees at the time. to try and hold hearings like that. And listen, I did not relish holding a hearing. I did not relish being the sole decision maker. It wasn't, it was probably the worst part of the job that I've had in the past three years. So taking the responsibility away, I don't like losing responsibilities for future mayors, but if this is one that has to go, I can live with that, but I really, really want to protect the future by putting that in there. And really what it is, it's waiting two weeks and putting a sentence in. And that's the compromise I'm asking for here.
Is it only waiting two weeks and putting a sentence in or is it starting the whole process all over again? Because the first public hearing on this was held in July, in August, and then we forgot to put it on the agenda in September and this started, you know, in March or April. So if it's just a matter, I mean, do we have to draft a new law and completely renotice it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so can we, can we do that within two weeks? Doesn't it, does it have to go back on a work session or can we make, can we insert the language tonight and renotice it and hold the hearing in two weeks?
If, if you want to write the language in tonight, you can renotice it and hold the here.
I'm fine with that.
I think that's, okay, let's, let's try to do that then.
Kelly, you have some ideas about the language?
You know, I was trying to look up my notes from, from Bob's memo.
Well, we got Bob sitting here. You know where we want to go here, right?
Yep.
Where do you think it should go?
Let's see.
Yeah, I found it. It would, the board can delegate the authority to hear and report, not to hear and decide. That was the language from your memo.
Right, the board, I think you can let me see where we put it. Right before the word terms, about four lines up in section one. I would add, the board of trustees may delegate the authority to hear and report. No, to, to, to conduct the hearing.
Give a report.
And report to the board of trustees.
Yes.
That sound good?
Yes.
Report or recommend? Report?
Report to the board of trustees.
Yeah.
Who makes the final decision? Yes.
Says that earlier, it says the board of trustees shall appoint and may remove.
Okay, so if we're gonna do that, what we should technically do is close this hearing and then make a motion to reschedule a public hearing on the amended law for two weeks.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close this public hearing today.
I'll second that.
Paulie Corleone. Trustee Zwincher?
Yes.
Natchez? Coffee?
He's on mute.
Trustee Natchez?
He's on mute.
Go to Victor. Nora.
Dan, no, he can hear you, Dan.
I'm talking Victor and he's on mute.
Give him a minute. Give him a minute.
Give him a second.
I'm sorry, where are we?
We're voting to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Tofor? He said yes. Mayor Murphy?
Hi. I am going to make a motion to reschedule this law as amended via Mr. Spolzino for the first regular board of trustees meeting in December, which is everybody know what time it ahead?
Fourteenth, I think December fourteenth.
Looking wow, for December fourteenth. How did that be?
No.
Because, it is. Because the first day of December is Tuesday.
You got it, you got it, you're right. Okay, I made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Paulie Corleone. Trustee Zwincher?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, thank you all very much. I think it'll be a better law at the end. I appreciate it.
Thanks, okay.
Okay. The next item on the agenda of the public hearing is appointment authority for the village clerk treasurer. Right now, the mayor has the authority to appoint the clerk treasurer. I oppose this, but you know, we can talk about it in a minute. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Paulie, please call a role. Trustee Zwincher?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, I'll just be brief. There are 500 and something villages in Westchester, in New York State. I think there's one or two that does it with the whole board appointing. I don't see why we would change it. I think that it's important to have a mayor, it's important to have a mayor who has responsibilities and duties and New York State has deemed that mayors should do some of these responsibilities and duties. And I think that there is no governmental reason to do this that justifies it. But, you know, it's something that'll have to go to the voters of the Village of America. And, you know, I'll make, if this passes tonight, I'll try and make my case today. And if they pass it, then that's the minus.
Mr. Tippett wants to speak.
Glenn, I'll meet you this time. I agree with Mayor Murphy, unfortunately. Through time, we've had positions. It used to be the village attorney where every time there was a change in trustees, they would use it as an excuse to change positions. And I don't want to see that with the clerk treasurer. I don't see any reason why we have to be the exception to the rule. Thank you.
Anybody else? Come in the board?
Well, I mean, I've said it in the work sessions, I don't believe this is necessary either. I'll be glad to put it behind us. I don't think this ongoing long discussion is helpful to current village staff. I don't support this, but we need to move past it.
I, I'll say a few things to clarify. First, under New York village law, there's a long list of things that the mayors are authorized and that actually connected with the previous law, we started clarifying because many things were unsaid about three years ago, when, when Bob joined us as village attorney, and that's the origin of all this. But it makes sense under New York law because under New York law, the structure for municipalities, the mayor being the executive. So it makes sense that he appoints the treasurer with, and then he nominates it and the board approves because that has a, but in our, in our system, that, that is the only position and in a council manager form of government, it, it doesn't make, make really any sense for us. Actually, when I joined the board under former mayor of Rosewood, this was not an issue and actually probably that's my most important point. That this is not about the clerk treasurer who's doing a magnificent job and especially in this last year, how they've chined he and his staff doing tremendous work for us. So this is not about, about, about the position. I think there's, there's absolutely no intent of getting there. We have, we have that department of, you know, I just can't, can't, can't say, say, say better things because they, they do a better job. But I think it's worth pointing it out that it, that it has, it has nothing to do with them. And actually, to finalize, let me just, let me just, if I may, if I may share, share my screen for you for a minute, you know, because this, this is the structure we have. Board of trustees, you know, village manager who really oversees all these figures, the clerk treasurer, the attorney, which we appoint, right? The police department is under his supervision. We, we, we just appoint the chief, right? So, so, so all these figures are appointed by the board of trustees. I don't really understand the exception. This is the way I've under understand it since I've been, since I've been on this board, three and a half, almost four years now. So, so with that, I, I think there's really no contention. There's really, really no problem. It's really organizing our village, our manager council form of government. So, so that's what it is. This is really not, there's nothing to do with politics. He has nothing to do with the clerk treasurer's office, which is tremendous. It's really putting, putting, putting all, all this village manager form of government moving ahead. That's how I see it.
Just let me point out, to go back to your screen. You, can you please go back to what you were sharing?
I'll try going, yep.
See, your screen has the board of trustees being appointed by the clerk treasurer as the way it is, but that is not the way it is.
This is, this may, current.
Please, please let me finish.
Okay, okay. I was just playing where, where this comes from. I think it's important. Then you continue. I don't mean to interrupt you, but this, this is, I just, I just looked at it from the, from in our village budget. In our budget, it always appears. So that's where I, where I just went online and looked at it. That's so that you know where it's coming from for you and all, all.
But that does not reflect what the law is now. That reflects a mistake in our village budget book. The law is now that the mayor appoints the clerk treasurer. So, I mean, I, I understand where you got it from, but this isn't, you know, the way it works. And we've had plenty of back and forth about that and legal opinions that the mayor appoints the clerk treasurer. So I, I understand this was in the budget book, but this is not demonstrative of the law. It's, it just reflects, you know, what's in our budget book. But that being said, listen, if you're gonna change it, you know, you know, change it and go to voters and, you know, let's see what happens.
Mayor, may I say something else? And I, the, the, what happened in three years ago was that it was unclear. It was undefined. It was not spelled out in the code, so it was subject to interpretation. And that's when, when our, our attorney ma- made the analysis and said it should be by, by the village, village mayor, by the mayor. So that's why three years ago and for, for since I've been sitting, we had the same, the same structure because that's how it was understood. And because it was not spelled out on the code, that's when we started this back and forth. So that's kind of the whole story.
Okay.
Then we'll see it on the merits and see how the voters.
All right.
I mean, I think, I think part of the confusion is we have, you know, we are one of the few village, villages that has a weak mayor form of government. And I think the other communities that have made this change have the same thing. So we have a strong manager and most villages in New York State don't. So I think, I think it's gone back and forth, the, the state, the state law and village law and the manager form of government changed at some point in the seventies, but we haven't kept up, we haven't kept up with the changes. So we have some, some vestiges from our establishment in the twenties and some holdovers where state law changed, state law relating to village law changed. But it doesn't look like until about 10 years ago, the mayor actually appointed the clerk treasurer. It was done by the board of trustees. So I think our budget book reflects the practice that held over from the original form of government. And so I think Victor's right. An error was identified or a a vagary was identified. And I think this is a, this is, you know, I think this is a good way to correct it.
Well, just, just, just let me be clear. When I got on the board, Mr. Spolzino said that he had made in, in saying that the board appointed the clerk treasurer because he had included that in what was in a permissive referendum. That's how it came out. And then upon further research, he found out that the mayor appointed the clerk treasurer. And he proposed a law to bring all law in harmony with New York State law. And that law did not pass. So we have knowingly been out of harmony for a few years. And I, I guess my problem always was that instead of fixing what was broken, we allow what was broken to remain. And then now we're trying to pass law that needs a permissive referendum to become a reality instead of just fixing what was broken in the beginning. And, you know, I guess from my point of view is that there's so much that's going on in the Village of America and so much that is needful, that is this something that really needs to go before votes and, you know, that, that will remain to be seen tonight. But, you know, there's a lot going on and, yeah, and I just, I don't think this has to happen, but, you know, it's gonna happen. So I'm gonna move on. I chewed my cabbage plenty, as my grandmother would say. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt this proposed law.
You have to close the hearing.
Oh, wait. It's a public hearing.
We gotta close the hearing. I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Paulie Corleone, please. Trustee Zwincher?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to, to adopt the proposed local law.
Second.
Always doing. Trustee Zwincher?
No.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No.
Okay. Okay, public hearing on P L E 2020, amending chapters 240 and 342, rare required setback from water bodies. I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Paulie Corleone. Trustee Zwincher?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
But this is a continuation, right?
No.
It was adjourned and we are reopening, isn't it the case?
Oh, yeah, you're right, because we wanted input from the boards and commissions.
Right.
All right, so we're reopening.
We're continuing the hearing, whatever, either way.
Continuing, yeah, great, okay.
All right, so what happened is when we passed P L C, what was that, August of 2019, time?
Time.
Time is just a big haze these days. Way back in 2019, when we passed P L C, there was a 50-foot setback requirement of development along the rivers and along water bodies with the rivers in the commercial zones. And it would prohibit any, anything being done within the 50-foot setback. On further examination, that made many parcels unimprovable, unbuildable. So we wanted to devise a way to give some relief along with some control for the village of along with some control for the village of development in those parcels. So this law, which gives the authority to grant the permit to develop in those parcels to the zoning board, was proposed and it basically has the same requirements as a variance. And, Mr. Spolzino, am I missing something?
No, I think that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. I personally think it should have been left with the planning board, but I think this law is better than no law because no law really enshrines what is going on now. And right now, there are parking lots and buildings right at the water's edge in a lot of ways. If there was development, we could move that back, at least, you know, some of the way. So I think that not doing anything is going to be really unfair to a lot of people's property. So I'd rather do this than do nothing. That's just me. Anybody else on the board?
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of comments. There are a couple of things that have been, that I think are important. The planning board and the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission both have sent communications to the board with issues as the law is presently drafted. And I know Chair of the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission appears to be in the audience and I would hope that he would relay why they have found the law not consistent in their recommendation to the village board. But one of the things that really concerns me is reading all the fine print here is it removes chapter 240 from any issue within the 50 feet, which means that for any docking facility, any structures permit, et cetera, instead of going to the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission, you would now have to go to the zoning board. Was never the intent, but I believe that is the effect. So that, so if we were to move forward on any of this, it needs to be it needs to be clarified so that that does not take away the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission oversight of things that are within 50 feet. It just gives the zoning board or whomever gets to the ability to say if you can consider it and move forward under certain conditions. But it doesn't, you know, it should not be, there are other issues that the different boards and committees need to look at and that should not, that was never the intent to take that away from them. So I think that's very important that we go back and, you know, we think this very carefully, you know, in the drafting of it. But I would love to hear more from the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission. If Thomas, I see his hand is up and if we could, maybe we can hear from him more directly as opposed to just reading.
Thomas, go ahead.
I mean, you said, Thomas.
Mayor Murphy, can you hear me all right?
Go ahead, Tom.
Mayor Murphy, trustees, thank you very much. Briefly, we voted unanimously that this proposed law was not consistent. We've stated our reasons in the letter. I want to highlight that as it stands now, section six changes 240-30 from planning board permit required to subheading that says development within the 50-foot buffer. What that does is move us from where we are today, where anything within 50 feet of Long Island Sound, under most circumstances, would come before planning and planning would refer for consistency determination. We determine consistency. And of course, if it's within 50 feet of Long Island Sound, one of the first things that we look at is our policy number two, which is to reserve the waterfront for water-dependent uses wherever possible. And if we take that out as this law proposes, we're no longer doing that. And zoning will decide whether something that is within 50 feet of Long Island Sound should or should not be built. And they do not bring to it the lens of policy two. They don't, and the other comments, to summarize, they don't bring the lens of any of those policies. There are two boards that think fairly consistently about environment, erosion, stormwater and floodplain safety. Planning does that and Harbor Coastal do that. And we work pretty closely together. Mayor Murphy, you said that you thought it should be planning. Whether it's planning or Harbor Coastal, we bring similar Foci, right? We think about the same stuff in more or less the same way. Zoning doesn't think about these things the way we do. And I have all the respect in the world for those hardworking volunteers and the work that they do, but they bring different thinking about it. And it is not their area. It's not something that they have settled expertise thinking about. And it requires them to bring a new skill set or dust it off from the back of the closet and see a lot of applications they otherwise would not see. I am very concerned, aside from the stuff I said in the letter, I am very concerned that what this means is that the things that would prevent important shorefront property from being used for non-water dependent uses, we're going to lose that. And we're going to have this considered by people who don't have as a focus that our water-dependent waterfront gets used for water-dependent purposes. That's what I have to say. But if you have further questions about why we did what we did, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
So your, one of your principal concerns is this remains either with planning or comes to CZN?
I think that, yeah, what the policies that we're concerned with, when somebody is building within 50 feet of the water, those concerns are only appropriately addressed either by planning or Harbor Coastal. And it can typically, what we have now typically is planning asking us what we think of it for consistency determination. But both of us bring that lens to it, and this erases both of us from much of this process.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
But that's not your only concern. He dropped off, but now he came back.
Are you still there, Thomas?
Somebody remuted me and I've unmuted myself again. I said, I didn't want to simply repeat the letter. But, you know, some of the other concerns are with 6B and, you know, who makes the determination and whether they focus on the unit of analysis as a neighborhood or an ecosystem and all that stuff. But the big, but you can really summarize the issues to big things. Whether waterfront land ought to be used only in water-dependent ways, which is, which is a lens that only our LWRP brings to it and shouldn't be written out of existing law. And whether we think about development near the water, whether river or coast, from a lens of erosion, stormwater, floodplain safety, environment and habitat, or whether we think of it primarily from a, from a use in variance standpoint.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes. I believe that this has to go back and be the providence of the planning board. I think what happens is when you go right to the Board of Appeals, appeals traditionally has a narrow scope at the way they look at a project. And to the most, most part, the Board of Appeals is the Board of, no. You have to have compelling reasons in order for something to go through. And if the Board of Appeals doesn't approve a project, well, then the problem is the entire scope of the project, the design of the building, the design of the landscaping, the look and texture of the materials. All this is the expertise of your planning board. Your Board of Appeals does not have the skill set that the planning board has for the complete design of a project. So I don't, if, if, if you haven't gone to the Board of Appeals, are you going to send it to the planning board afterwards to actually design the project? And if it changes, does it have to go back to the Board of Appeals again? I think you're better off sending this to the Board of Appeals first. Thank you.
You mean, you don't mean the Board of Appeals, you mean the planning board, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what he meant.
All right, let's go to Ms. Rooney. Doreen, unmute yourself. Doreen, unmute yourself.
I think she's trying to call in.
Try to 914 then. Doreen?
Hello?
Hi.
Hello?
Hi.
I guess you can hear me now. I did send you correspondence at about four or so in the afternoon, this afternoon. But I also just sent you something that's very old. And Thomas, my chair, because I'm still on the commission, might not be aware of. William Sharp from the Department of State is the principal attorney. I guess in 2014 or 15, I just sent you this memo when there was a question about our consistency law. I just wanted to bring this to your attention because we never accomplished what was supposed to be in that law, which was actions by the zoning board of appeals need to be reviewed for consistency in some cases. So if you're thinking about this law remaining with the zoning board of appeals, you know, the consistency law might even need to be changed. As you're aware, I'm a member of the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission. I do own property bordering the Mariner River. I wanted to point out a couple of things that are key to this law. Many of the changes were made to chapter 240 of the code. But in actuality, these areas, whether they be tidal or freshwater, are wetlands. So if you're thinking about going back to the drawing board on this, on this law, it would really behoove you to do that through the wetlands law in the village of Mariner. Because you made significant changes to chapter 240 of the code. And that would need to go to Department of State, DEC and other agencies. All these other agencies that are outside the village is what the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission reviews on applications for applicants. So that would add another step in the process if they were needing a permit from, say, Army Corps of Engineers, which is a federal agency. Department of State, if there were certain permits. DEC for tidal wetlands. And there's also a Westchester County Stream Control Permit for any work within streams and, you know, within 100 feet. So what I'm trying to say is there are many other agencies that are involved here. And when you did Seeker in September and when you, going back to March, when you initially typed it, I don't think you did a notice of intent for lead agency and corresponded with all of these other agencies so that they can give you feedback as to how this law might impact, you know, their jurisdiction. The last thing I wanted to ask the board, there's a section in, in this code is written, it's section 10, it's 34289. And it pretty much gives the zoning board of appeals full authority for chapter 240 of the code, which is what the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission is responsible for. I'm wondering if this is a drafting error or seriously have you given the authority of all things Harbor Coastal Zone to the zoning board of appeals? Because that's what my read of that section of the code is. And I'd like you to think about that, maybe, you know, come up with an answer. Thanks for your time tonight and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Same you, dear. Thank you. Ms. Van Eyck?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I certainly can't speak with the knowledge that everyone else has, but I'm going to speak as a homeowner in the floodplain. And I'm very concerned about this. And I think that anybody listening needs to understand that what we're doing is changing our 100-foot buffer to the wetlands, to a 50-foot buffer, which means that buildings will be sited 50 feet closer to the river. You know, all of us know that the Army Corps is not coming to save us with this new plan. We all fear the next flood and every rainstorm. And we're at the bottom of a huge watershed. We can't get out of here. So what I'm really kind of upset about, and I think that everybody in this community should be upset about, and I think that if you pass this, it's an egregious breach of your public responsibility and trust. Because we are in a position at this point, we need to be the example, not the jackasses. Right now, we need to be following state, federal codes on floodplain management. I sent you information. They recommend that what we do, like we made a TOD overlay, we need a floodplain wetland resource conservation overlay district. And we need studies like Paul Rubin did to understand the effect that this change you want to make to move everything 50 feet closer to the river, what is it going to do to all of us from the reservoir down? Paul Rubin already did a study, a major world-renowned hydrologist, that our problem is the whole city avenue bridge. And what the Army Corps was going to do is going to make our flooding worse. Where are the studies? Where is your backup from hydrologists on what's going to happen if you change this? Because there's a responsibility to the residents here, to their safety. I'm not talking about making them rich using their property. We're all at the mercy of FEMA if we have flood insurance, if we have accidents with floods. And we have to raise our homes. We don't have a choice anymore if the damage is over 50% of the value. We don't owe property owners in a floodplain a profit on their property. Maybe they have to make changes and build up in the air. That's too bad. We're all in that boat right now. The water is rising. We see it at the harbor coming over the walls. It's not time to do this. It is time to go in the other way, the other direction, and call in other communities, study what we're doing right now and stop placating specific spot zoning and people and friends and who wants to build a building or site it where? Nothing by the rivers now. The Mason is an example of that. Who is our floodplain administrator in this village right now? Does anybody know? It's just Spolzino, do you know? Who is managing our floodplain right now?
I know.
Are you, are you the new floodplain manager, Jerry?
His name is Joe Chremelli.
Is he part of our village or is he from outside the village?
He's part of our village. He's consulting with our consultant.
Okay, has he initiated any studies into what changes this law is going to do to all of us who own homes and to our, and what the long-term effects of the water are going to be? Like Seeker would require an entire review of what would happen from the reservoir down? I mean, we're at the bottom of the watershed. If we start building along the river all the way up and down, what happens to all of us? That answer, I don't see it anywhere. I don't see any reports. We have Paul Rubin's report on file. It's on the website. I think that needs a reread. Maybe we need to contact him. But you certainly need to do a study of this entire effect of our entire river all the way up to, throughout to Harrison and White Plains. And if you start working with some of the other communities, let's get proactive here and stop this development. Let's do an overlay and extend the buffer. Most of the state, New York floodplain management recommends a 500-foot buffer. There has to be a science behind the number that you come up with. I want to know if we have that and if we intend to get it. Or this is just to put a certain building in a certain location or make certain people happy? Because the rest of it's going to suffer like the Mason. That's seven feet of fill on almost three acres. And we have yet to see where that water is going to go and where our and where our floodplains are going to be. That's my concern as a homeowner and a resident of this village. I really care about the village. I don't want to see this happen. I don't want people to die. But our floodplain is expanding and what this law is going to do is make it worse. According to what I've read, but I want a professional like Paul Rubin to come in and tell us what's going to happen if we do this. That's what you need to do and that's your responsibility to the village residents. This is a profound change of the law. And right now, with all the rains we're having, with all the storms we're having, this is not just, oh, let's do it and it's not going to have an effect. It's going to change things. And we need to know what it's going to do. Because I know none of you want to have anybody in harm's way. That's not who you are. And this is just like working backwards instead of working and being an example. Not many people are at the bottom of a floodplain. We are an unusual situation and we have to treat ourselves as though we're the kings and queens of the world and protect ourselves. That's where we're at right now. And I hope that you can do that. Because it's going to take courage to stand up and say, stop this nonsense and let's go forward scientifically and put an overlay and protect. Maybe people have to be bought out. Maybe they can't build. Maybe I can't rebuild my house where I am. But that's where we're at now for the future. And those are the people we have to bring in with the knowledge to make these decisions. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good evening. Board of Trustees.
Well, I'm happy to start. I feel as though we're having the same kind of process that we've had with the tree law where we get to a certain point, we think we're okay, and then we get comments from the boards and commissions. And we need to make changes. And I think that enough has been said this evening that we need to change this law. And I think we would benefit from working with representatives from each of the three land use boards to make those changes.
I have a different view of this. And I think what happened is, you know, there was such a gap in time between when we really hammered this out in work sessions and then COVID hit and this didn't get scheduled for public hearing. But really, this, this law was to correct a mistake that was made when we passed PLLC. When we passed PLLC, we added this 50-foot setback, which, I mean, I, I think there, there's a public misunderstanding about this law. We added this 50-foot setback and because so many of our properties in C1 and C2 are irregularly shaped and on the river, we made them unimprovable with this law. And so what we were trying to do was provide an out and in a way that those property owners could get a possibility of relief if they wanted to improve their properties, which is what we want. We don't want these older properties on the rivers in C1 and C2 being left in a state of disrepair and being unimprovable. So we're, we were trying to find a way that a property owner who wanted to improve the property, and again, this is very limited in what zones it applies to, but could, could find some relief and get a variance. Because we were shocked to learn, I remember, that, that they couldn't get a variance to build within this 50-foot buffer. And we learned that at the last minute. So, you know, I had hoped during the work session discussions that this could have been a planning board decision. Because I think it's unfair to ask people to go to up to three boards in this case to, to develop their properties. I think it's really burdensome. We went to the three boards. They all wanted to hear it. Planning Board wanted to hear it. Zoning wanted to hear it. HCZM wanted to hear it. We decided as a board, a majority of the board, that it should go to, to ZBA. So we crafted this. It looks, it's not just a strict variance. It concludes all, includes a number of riverine-specific planting and erosion controls and considerations. And it's a new beast that we're giving to the zoning board. We're trying to correct a mistake. That's what we're doing. I mean, we were trying to correct a mistake. We went back and forth with the land use boards at the time when this was in work session. You know, I don't see that their comments now are much different from what they were then in that they all think they should have jurisdiction over this. I just, you know, I would hope we could avoid going back to the drawing board because we're just going to have to all collect our memories again as to what we were doing. We're trying to fix a dire mistake that was made in August of 2019 and give some relief to property owners who are just stuck in a holding pattern. That's so, that's, those are my views.
Dan, can you mute it?
I think you're right. We were trying to put an escape valve in. But I think the boards have to point out that the devil's in the details. The details have problems. And we, in unforeseen repercussions and consequences. And I think, you know, it behooves us to actually go back and fine tune this and get, and make sure we get it right. Or it doesn't make sense to do it. And I, you know, yes, it's going to take a little bit more time, but it's better to do it right than not, not do it at all. So anyway, that's, that's my view. And I think what we should do is be closing the hearing and put this back-to-work session and spend some time going through it and rethinking, you know, what, what the issues are that have been, I think, really very carefully raised by the land use boards. The ability that each of them want to do it themselves. But that's, that I'm not getting into at the moment. I think they, they've raised some other very, very substantive issues that we need to be very careful on.
Victor?
First of all, this is, this is pretty complex, but, but let, let, let's try to, to clarify finally a lot of things. And we can only do that because the boards have not just sent us three, three amazed, three very good letters, clear, succinct, actually. It's not a lot of with, and telling us exactly what, what we should correct. And not just that, I know they spent some, a lot of time discussing it. I haven't seen everything, but, but what I've, what I've heard and read actually turns me to reconsider cer- certain things and to move hopefully in the right way. And actually, those three letters and something else has, has, has opened my eyes. Because as Kelly was saying, a lot has happened since we discussed this. And I'll get to a little bit of that history in a minute. Not the whole history because it's too complex and a lot, but the important things. But in the, in this time, New York Department of State has been working very hard on model laws to increase resiliency. That is part of the New York Community Risk and Resiliency Act. One of the most important laws that this state has passed. And in doing so, they have now local laws for managing floodplains. Maybe some of the reference that was made by a recent caller, maybe Gina. Different tools and really giving you all the toolbox, you know, state of the art. And actually, the, they just finished completing the third chapter, which is about the coastal part. I had looked at this early on and they only had the, the, the wetlands, but now it's complete and they've been, they've been expanding. So looking at that, there are now better options to look at this problem. Let me cut to the chase. I think we should reconsider the board. I think there's a difference in the letters that we've received now. Actually, the, the recent letters we received, different from the previous ones from the planning boards, don't say, are not telling us, I want it, I want to give it to me. If we go, if we start with the planning board, they actually say, we recommend that either the planning board or the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission have jurisdiction over this. Permit, variance, waiver. Because the previous comment is, let's clarify that. What, what, what is, what is happening here? So that, that is a very important comment and it, it reflects what Harbor is telling us that they, they are not telling us, I want it, give it to me, or give it, or give it to planning. But let's make sure that both of us are doing the right thing. Okay? Also, before I leave the planning board's comments, there was something very important there, which is section 240, which we're now changing, starts by saying, in addition to other required permits and approvals, which would avoid that problem that we're removing things or we're adding things. And, and I think we'll, we can, we can now understand why we're in, in this, in this conundrum. The, the problem lies that when we were discussed, when we were doing the moratorium, we were working under the section on zoning. Our chapter on zoning is 240. And, and the real problem is actually not even in this, in the law we have in front of us, except that it, our law says that we're repealing that section. The section that we, that we are, that we, that got us into this trouble is, is paragraph five of 24050 that was all about large complexes, multifamily housing being built in the village. And what we said there was, don't, don't put it in the 50-foot buffer. The 50-foot buffer has existed, as I understand it, since at least 2004. The 60, the 50-foot buffer comes from 240 and it's different from the 100-foot buffer that Gina was talking about, which is about the wetlands. What we, so what we did there was we said, we don't want buildings here. However, we, we didn't, at the time, realize that when we made a cross-reference to another chapter, we were then not allowing the escape valve from the zoning board of appeals. That's where we, we had a, a technical oversight, right? But then, when we tried to fix this, we opened the door to, to, to fix it through the, the other chapter, which is 240. And then we, 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 we were, we were really trying to, to address too many thi- too many things at the same time. So let me try to wrap it up. Our, our proposal now, which debated a lot, was one of the options actually that the Department of State still kind of supports in the toolbox, which is to essentially give it to the zoning board as, as, almost as a setback. So that's one, one, one of the pieces in the toolbox. However, as you move forward and as you see now that all these documents have been revised and, and we see how that can be applied in our own village, I, I actually have to turn around and say, I think we need to reconsider the zoning board of appeals being the grantee. Because actually, when you get, you see their letters, the last letter, they are not, they're not telling us that they want it. And, and on the other, on the contrary, they say they would like somebody to certify that injured, that the, that they would like certification that the environmental erosion concerns are okay. So at the very, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm reading from a different law, reading from the wrong. They're saying they would want a survey done and certification from a licensed engineer that the constructor will not cause adverse impacts on the environment. And of course, this letter coming from the chair of the zoning board has a lot of positions and a lot of good points that we also have to take into account. So wrapping this up, I've actually been convinced that, that, that in our village, while this option of, of zoning board of appeals could, could have, could have worked, is probably not the best fix. And that, and that with all the elements that we've have in front of us over a year looking at this and this new, this new toolbox that we have from the Department of State, we actually now, because there's two problems here. One is who, what is the, what is the authority granting it? But perhaps the most important one is what are the criteria? And that's what we were struggling. So we went to the, to the classic formula of, of the variance. But we tried to apply it in the setting of 240 and that's, that's where, that's where Mr., the chair of, of the HCZM has, and they're, they're absolutely right that we're missing the mark because we are not using the right criteria. The Department of State in the new bottle laws has other criteria that are more suitable. Public health and safety, whether there are alternatives, real tools. So I, I am, I am, I am for just going back quickly, getting this all put back together, reassemble that it should be the planning board with HCZM really weighing in the, in the right way or even vice versa, but probably the first one is the best take. So I just have to, have to humbly accept that I, I was probably on the wrong track. And I have learned here that our, the wisdom of our boards, our residents and the Department of State is above me and I'm willing to work on this one so we get it right. Because is, it is really the floodplain, so we have to good it, do it correctly. This doesn't affect homeowner, resident, single homeowners or single two-family. This only affects large housing developments, but we don't want them next to the river or if they're close to the river, they have to be done properly. Because as we were talking at the beginning of this hearing, 2007 and other dates are, are in our heads. I, now I tried to get into the village to do that area and I just couldn't. And anyway, we all have our story of that day. So that, that's a long story to say. There's a lot here in this board and I, in this, in this law. And I really thank our volunteers because they're inside, they're experienced much more than I have here, even, even, even on a environmental attorney. They, 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 they have, they have opened our eyes that we're on the wrong track.
Okay, so just originally, before PLLC, the 50-foot setback, you, you got a, a permit from the planning board. It wasn't that there was, you know, a prohibition against building before this. Before this, you could build, but you had to build appropriately and you got that from the planning board. I thought that it always should stay with the planning board, that that was the best move. I'm glad that there is movement. If, if, if we were going back to the zoning board again, I would say, let's just vote on this tonight. Because truthfully, most of the issues that have been raised were raised in one form or another that got us to where we are today. I, I'm, I'm happy to rework this because I always thought it should go be the planning board. I, I thought it was dead policy to make somebody go to three boards and to go, to go to the zoning board is always, strikes fear in the hearts of people. They don't want to go to the zoning board. It, it, it is, you know, a, a, another hurdle that oftentimes keeps people from trying. And if you talk to folks in the development world, they will tell you that. So I'm happy to rework this with the proviso that it goes to the planning board. Because if it, if we're going to come back to this and say, oh, we're going to go to the zoning board again, I'll just might as well vote on it tonight. But I, I will take the good faith, you know, that, that my colleagues have said and that we're going to work on it and try and give it back to the planning board. Because I think at the end of the day, that is the best outcome for the village of America, the best outcome for the landowners who have us. And just let me point out that, you know, if we do nothing, then nothing changes. What we enshrine is the bad development that has happened in the village of America generations. Things that are right up on the water right now. The things that are just going to get dilapidated and fall into the river. That, that is what's going to happen. It's going to be a static situation where nothing improves and nothing changes. And where you're going to devalue many people's properties to the point of them not being developable. And it is going to hurt us in the long run. We had a bunch of landowners come in here and express, you know, their particular problems with the property. Listen, if, if we had just bought this 3.3 square miles and we were just developing it into a community, I could see, yeah, well, well, let's have 50-foot setbacks and nothing built anywhere in those 50s foot setbacks. And that would be fine. But this is an already overbuilt community and we've allowed people to build. And now we just can't tell them, you can't use your property anymore. One gentleman was here and it would have totally devalued his property. He would have had a triangle that he could have built on. And that was it. So I'm happy that we're going to look at this through the eyes of the planning board. That's where I think the decision on most of these developments should be. And I think that, you know, working in tandem with the CZM and, you know, the, the power that they have to give consistency, I, I think that that is a good team. And I was happy to read that from, uh, H C C M C, uh, that they were open to that too. So I, I guess the move here is to adjourn, is to close this and put it back on the work session for two weeks from now.
I move to close the hearing.
I, I, I'll agree, I just, I just wanna say that it's, it's not as if we're, we can't just go back to the way it was before because that waiver provision got us a very big building with a lot of fill twenty feet, twenty-five feet from the water. So I think we need to make sure that, um, there are, there are, there are criteria, using the toolbox that Victor talked about, to make sure that when something is built within the fifty foot buffer, it's really built in a way that improves, improves and is not a detriment to the village. So I vote yes to close the public hearing.
Are you just seconding, right?
Oh, just a second.
Trustees, windshield?
Yes.
Atches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye, thank you.
Well.
So I, I think we should also vote to, you know, should we vote, I, I don't know, should we vote the law down, the public hearing is closed, should we just determine it?
I think what you do is just simply refer it back to work session and we'll come up with a revised law. Uh, I, I don't want the public to be misled that it's automatically gonna go to planning or automatically go to Harvard Coastal Zone Management Commission. That's something we need to work out and flush out with the language and decide what, you know, what the implications are.
Well, I'll tell you what, i- if, if, I, I won't support a law now that doesn't go to what it does, but I, I, yeah, zoning was, I, I always thought that was a bad idea. Okay, so we'll, we'll close this, we'll be back on work session. Order of bills, oh, I don't have the
I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Sally brought to my intention that there was another resolution for P L L M mayor and board for scheduling a public here, excuse me, not scheduling a public hearing, um, scheduling the referendum. I don't know if you wanna do that tonight, or you wanna carry that over to your next meeting.
Actually scheduled.
Because I haven't seen it.
Wait, to actually schedule the public hearing?
The referendum.
Really?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's online, I
But I don't think it was in the packet, hold on.
What, what does it say we should schedule it when, for when?
It's not till November second, twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, it's, it's, we don't, it's, we're not actually, we're not actually hearing it, it's the election. It has to go to the county board of elections. It's not a village vote, I mean, it's a village vote, but it's a village vote under an election.
It's essentially, yeah, it's a vote to submit it for the approval of the electors.
Right.
Okay, we'll, we'll do it at the next meeting.
Yeah. Thanks.
Two A. I don't have the manual.
No, because it didn't come till today.
And it's, it's just online, I mean, I just got an email.
You got it, you got it, yeah, my bad, okay. Two A, uh, resolution both rising to exact budget transfer of the central communication budget line. So we're taking, uh, one thousand, no, one hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars at a fund balance, and we're putting it to a central communication telephone. Jerry, you want to talk about this?
Mayor?
Oh, Jerry stepped out from it.
Oh, the village, uh, has a new bone, uh, new horizon, which over a period of five years will save the village over two hundred thousand. When the pandemic hit, we had stopped the installation of this new phone system. Uh, we anticipate that we should finish the implementation at the end of December. But as of now, in order to complete this year, we're gonna need the remaining balance of one hundred fourteen thousand to complete the year.
Okay, and this is the transfer to do it?
This is the transfer to do it.
Okay. Any questions or concerns?
No.
In motion? Somebody make motion?
So moved.
Second.
What you call, please? Let's see, his windshield?
Yes.
That is?
I'm gonna abstain on all of the order to the bill section because I haven't been able to get the material in time for me to review it.
This is just a budget transfer, Dan. This was part of the paper backup.
Yeah, you had it.
Vote yes.
Two A.
Is the one fourteen, five seventy?
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Okay, I'll just, there was a breakdown on Friday of the K V S system. And the staff could not get, we ordered about vouchers out until today. It was, you know, it, it, it had to do with a back, with a power supply, right?
Cliff, can you explain what happened?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, man.
Yeah, so what was it, Thursday morning at twelve forty a.m. we experienced a power outage, which resulted in the physical server being offline, which meant that the backups from that night, which run, I believe, at one or two in the morning, um, did not run. Then, what was it, Thursday, because of that power outage, um, and a couple of other issues, uh, the server itself ran into a, a technical issue. We resolved that issue, brought everything back online Friday morning when, uh, we became aware of it. And, uh, what was it? But when we got the server operational, I had staff check out the, uh, their, their connectivity. Everything was up and running, but they identified that data was missing and that was directly related to the fact that the server had, uh, been improperly shut down. Uh, one time followed by, uh, technical, uh, issues with the virtualized server, um, that occurred on Thursday. We reached out to the vendor, uh, and after investigating to see if we could recover the data entry from Wednesday and Thursday, we found that the only good set of backups that we had, uh, were from Tuesday night, which would have resulted in us, even if we restored to that backup, uh, we would have had to go through the same process of inputting data from Wednesday and Thursday. Steph had already been inputting data on Friday, so we would have lost that information. As a result, we ended up, uh, deciding to go through everything manually and re-imputing it, which resulted in us, um, only being able to get the abstract to you this morning.
I think the staff's done an admirable job. I just haven't been, had time to download it today and look at it. I've been meeting and others, activities all day, so I couldn't do it.
But I, I just wanted, uh, I just wanted, you know, the staff have an opportunity to explain. The manual vouchers tonight are five thousand four hundred, and it is a payment to the First Baptist Church for the, uh, easement to build the Hillside Avenue Bridge. And I imagine they've been paid already, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Any motion for a manual, one check, fifty four hundred dollars in that just?
So moved.
Second.
Augustino. Trustee, windshield?
Yes.
Attent?
Upstate.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. The abstract of ordered vouchers, two hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-one cents. Uh, anybody have any questions or concerns? I see, uh, Mr. Tippett?
Hello, Glenn. Go ahead, Glenn.
Yeah, uh, I did have my hand up for the central communications, uh, transfer. That's where I got the, uh, term, general revenue. Where is that money actually, uh, coming from? That hundred and, uh, fifteen thousand, it says, fund ballots. Is that the reserve fund?
Retainer.
On the regular, I'll go back to what I was discussing before. You have sixty-three thousand dollars worth of law. With last, uh, uh, meeting, that's seventy thousand. And the abstract from eleven nine shows that we had already spent a substantial amount of our budget. If you add it all together, you have a hundred ninety thousand dollars left in your law budget. That has to be looked at. You, uh, you, and I don't even believe you have, uh, any money towards the T card case, even the retainer for the T card case charged yet. I got cut off, you only get five minutes. But you have to get together with the budget committee. You just can't throw it on Jerry and Augie, go, go, go cut someplace. You have some, some problems, you have some problems with revenue. You don't know how much is coming to the state. Even your, um, your, uh, fund for, uh, Corona nineteen relief, you spoke about FEMA limiting you to what, a seventy-five percent recovery or an eighty percent recovery? Well, if you got two hundred and fifty thousand worth of Corona expenses, that means there's another fifty thousand out there on the hook. Interest earned by that, that we got down for twenty-five thousand. We've, we've, we've got earned about five hundred dollars in interest so far. Interest rates are at one percent, I mean, are we gonna earn five thousand? Police, uh, uh, deployment. You know, we get over two hundred thousand dollars, we've gotten fourteen thousand dollars. Fines and forfeitures, normally you, you would get over a million dollars. We got like a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, you're nine hundred thousand. Even if that goes back to normal, for the second half of the year, you're still talking, you know, three, four hundred thousand dollar shortfall. And it's not gonna get better with the courts, you're not gonna be able to use the tent to have court cases outside and you have an upturn to Corona. So you might have the courts closing down again, December, January, February, at least until you start to get the vaccine out there. These are serious, serious issues that you are going to have to start to address in a real thing. Jerry, I think, is doing a financial report today, I hope so. I've watched every other, no, I've watched every other community and they have had financial updates. Scarsdale on their site, financial update, Rye on their site, financial update. They are, they're looking at budget cuts. And understand, your budget, even starting this year, was structurally out of balance. That means that next year, even if you get the two percent raise in property tax, that doesn't cover the six hundred thousand that you were originally borrowing. Your spending right now is scheduled to be two million more than your, uh, your, uh, revenues. Six hundred thousand is coming out of the reserve fund. Where is the other one point four million coming from? And that doesn't include any of the shortfalls that I'm talking about in the budget. Can somebody, you know, explain where that one point four million is coming from? Thank you.
Thank you. Order of bills.
Mayor, mayor, may I? May I?
Go ahead.
Attent, you were gonna go first, go first.
No, 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 go ahead, Victor, go ahead.
What I was gonna say is, uh, just, just for, for Glenn's concerns and, 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 and any other resident, uh, when I'm listening now, but I'm sure everybody's, is, is concerned about, about the situation. Uh, I just, just wanted to clarify that, that if we don't answer, not, not that we're not, that we're not taking this as serious as you, as you pu- put it out there, eh, probably even more so. And I'll, and I'll just, but I have to add a couple of things. One is, we're looking at this very carefully, as I, as I put a very few good words here for the treasurer. We know it's, uh, we know, they keep us informed to the detail. As you were pointing out, we just used, uh, fourteen thousand from our rescapit, from our fund balance. Today, you know, one hundred and, one hundred and fourteen, we were, before that, we were at two, eight hundred and two. And if we use a little more for the cost, we're gonna be at a million dollars, right? But we're not doing it, we, we're, we're watching every bit of those coming up. We're being given a list, we, we, we know exactly where it's coming from. Uh, I cannot answer how we're gonna fill in the difference, but I can tell you one thing, since day one, I, I'll put this, 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 uh, for, for Jerry. He has been looking at this as nobody else with sellers really controlling this to the, to the second, to the minute, to the penny. Not just in, 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 in money spending, but, but in policy. Because it's just, you know, say, save this, save that, that's not what we're doing. In addition to that, the policy decisions are being very seriously considered. So, so I really thank you for putting this out there and, and, and keeping a check on us. And I'll just respond and say, we, we are, we are, we're concerned about this and we'll do the checks as, uh, soon. We, we've been, last, last week, there was a very important seminar by, by the Controller's Office. I moved heaven and earth to hear that and it was amazing, we heard it, encouraged by our, by our, by our, and I'm sure some colleagues of mine, and if not, we, we all share our, our strength here. But of course, this is, this is concern number one, and I think on this one, the village is really working as a team very closely, so I just finished with that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanna point out that the, the village budget was never out of bounds. Uh, ma- many communities use fund balance, fund balance is excess taxes that have been collected over the years. The village has, at what point are you, ten million?
Yes.
About ten million in excess taxes that have been collected over the years. Uh, they, they, they budget using six hundred thousand of that every year, uh, to keep the tax rate down. We did it when I was in the Town of Ameri, uh, we did it before, uh, when I was a trustee in the villages. It did not, anything is fiscally unsound. Uh, it is actually, you know, a, a, a way of doing business that is accepted. All, you know, the, uh, controller comes in here every year and does an audit and they know about it and it's an accepted practice. Just before us now is the two hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-one cents. Does anybody have questions or concerns? Okay, I'll make the motion to adopt this.
A second.
Augustino? Trustees, windshield?
Yes.
Trustee, Natchez?
Upstate.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
Is this the, 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 the second one?
Yeah, yes.
I have a comment on page six. There is a four, four K, four thousand of Jason for, for Taylor's Lane, again on the lawyers line. Can you please remove it for the lawyers line and put in engineering? It's happened three times now, I know, it's probably the system, but please.
Yeah.
Although we don't have that, okay. With that, I, I say yes.
And I say yes to it. Okay, we've paid the bills. You know, coming down, aren't you, buddy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, can I finish the roll call?
I said yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I got a little heady there, huh?
Yes.
I have three reds. Yes, old business, uh, Hummock Road, I M A. We talked about this at work session, uh, there was a gentleman on before, uh, Mr. Pickett, who, uh, is building a house at, uh, two or three Hummocks. And he is, Hummocks and, we've got Hummock Road and Oak Lane, almost all those houses, all of those houses, not even almost all. All those houses are still in septic. Uh, Mr. Pickett, at his own expense, is going to build a connection from his house or we down Hummocks to around Eagle Nose, uh, sewer, sanitary sewer. Uh, and this will allow in the future residents of the Town of Ameri and Village of Ameri, because that, uh, area, you know, you, you cross one side of the street, you're in the town, you cross the other side of the street, you're in the village. So this has been before us for a long time. We have gone back and forth with the town. Uh, the town has accepted some of our changes and not accepted others. So in front of us tonight is a, a change that the town cannot accept and that change is on page seven of the I M A. And then, so we pull it out here. And so we pull it out here. Paragraph eight, uh the town shall not charge the village a sewer fee. Sewer use fee for discharge of sanitary waste. It 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 says within the village. And the original language was for many parcel having frontage on Oak Lane. Uh the town says that uh within the village is way too. Uh vague and could run into other problems elsewhere. I think that we need to get this done. So I would be for putting the original language back in and passing this tonight. But I'd like to hear what my colleague say.
Um I'd like to suggest a amendment to what is being suggested. Um that I think the town could accept and I think protects more of the village's resident residents. Um so I not only to have it sit read with Oak Lane. Uh but hum those within those within the village on Homics Road. And within uh the portion of Eagles Nose Road on the south side. Um on the public portion of Eagle Eagles Nose Road on the south side from Homics Road through five forty-one Homics Road.
Okay.
I think the concern is to have an open ended in terms of future development that might may or may not take place. This allows all the residents that have, you know, um properties. Uh to be able to join at some point in time and not be charged a tipping fee. It um. There also needs to be a change to. On page three on uh. The definition of extension. Because it reads under Homics Road and it should be under Oak Lane and Homics Road because that's actually what the plans show.
Okay, but we have a memo from Mr. Altieri saying that is unacceptable to the town.
No, he said the language. That the that was previously suggested by others. Actually, it was the town's lawyer who gave that language. Uh was unacceptable, which is fine. And I understand that it the concern, as I understand it, is it's too open ended. And the issue is you have two oh five Homics Road that gets left out of any of the definitions. Because it's to the right of the uh, you know, where the Homics Road changes coming down to two twenty. Uh and it doesn't include uh. Uh the houses on Eagle Dog's Road, which Eagle Nose Road, excuse me. Some people feel, I know you feel that, well, we could do that at a later date, but it's not a later date. We could be doing all at one time and it's simple. But I can understand the town's concern of having an open ended thing, particularly when there is a large development project. That could be interpreted to get under through in there through a loophole without paying to the town, and I understand that. And I think that if that is the concern, it's well founded. So I'm trying to button that up and and tie it up to limit it to, you know, the concept that was originally undertaken. So I'd like to move that as a that to, I'd like to move that the we authorize the manager. Uh to enter into an agreement with the town with those uh with those revisions. Um with revisions that accomplish that accomplish. The 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 issues of that I've just raised, which is uh allowing two oh five to be part of it. Uh that the definition of extension include Oak Lane. Um that we include on page number eight. Uh Homics Road, uh Oak Lane and the southern portion of Eagles, the public, the southern portion. The public southern portion of Eagles Nose Road. Uh from the joint from the junction of Homics Road to through five forty-one Homics uh Eagles Nose Road.
But there is no public portion of Eagle Knolls. It is a private road, so that language have to be changed. I have to say, this is so frustrating because every time we talk about this, there are new changes we want put in the agreement every time. The the conversations before were, let's make sure the maintenance terms require the town to maintain the town properties. And the village to maintain the the repairs on the village properties. And now we're talking about adding Eagle Knolls. I mean. Every time we talk about this, we add more changes.
Kelly. What you're saying, and I am not trying to be an obstructionist, and I really would like to get it done. And it's, but it there are representations that everything is right. It's not right. Uh and that that's part of the problem. That's not something that this board should be have to do. It should have been done. By the people who have proposed it and done their homework. They didn't do the homework properly. There's no reason to shortchange residents in the village because they didn't do that.
My guess is they would say they would take, you know, issue with that.
I I understand that, but our job is to protect the village residents.
This this is about, this is about one man. Building one line. Uh if the village someday decides to build up Eagles Knolls Road, the village would have to do it. Uh and the village, you know, it would then deal with it with the town. We would just be hooking up into, you know, the manhole there. And what we're talking about in fees too are 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 ministerial. I mean, this is, this is beating a dead horse for no reason. The town isn't gonna accept this and we're gonna be back to the drawing board. You know, and and so what's gonna happen is this gentleman is not gonna be able to finish this project. It it's gonna get delayed. And this is something that we can take care of at a later date if it ever happens. But, you know, let's get something done. You know, we keep changing, you know, it's like. Every time we get to the ten yard line, they 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 put another twenty yards on the field. And nothing's ever getting done. We've been talking about this for months, months, you know.
If we'd gotten it, if we'd gotten information earlier, Tom. But we didn't. That's that's the problem.
Bob, can you? Give us the gist of your conversation with the town attorney? You you're muted. You're muted.
I I've had multiple conversations with the town attorney and with the town administrator about this. The the most recent comments you see in Mr. Altieri's letter. They they did discuss. Eagle Knolls and did not want to allow uh the agreement to cover Eagle Knolls Road, which is why they proposed the the change. To what the village had been considering as they did. Um I don't know what else to tell you.
Didn't when they did they give you a reason they didn't want to?
They they didn't want to extend further. The possibility of adding more. Um residences to the sewer system. Without receiving any compensation for it.
Which is understandable. We'd be doing the same. And and what are we talking about here? We're talking about sewer use fee uh for small portion.
Well, those people probably already pay a sewer use fee, right? You pay it whether you're using, whether you're on it or not.
Not in the town. In the town.
And and in the village, we've exempted properties on septic.
Yep. Have?
Oh, yeah. For several years.
Oh, okay.
Many years since the law was adopted, there's been an exception for uh properties on septic.
If 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 we were approved with trustee Natchez is. Saying, we're just gonna be back here in a month. They're not gonna accept. You know, we've gotten a lot of what we wanted. So please, let's not let the perfect enemy be good.
I I think it's a better agreement. I just, I I do think that the. The manhole, there is a manhole actually like on Oak Lane because Oak Lane appears to. Uh become Oak Lane at Homics Road, you know, when when Homics Road turns right, then it's Oak Lane. So I do think we have to make sure that, because there and there is a house. That has like a manhole in front of it. So I do think on page three that properties allow. Check the, well, I guess the thing is the the extension. Is from.
The extension.
Road like west towards Larchmont, basically.
The extension is from Eagle Knolls to two oh three Homics. The additions of the extensions are two oh three Homics and two twenty-five Homics.
Okay.
The Oak Lane is is addressed by section eight, which talks about the possibility of future. Extensions, although I don't want to use that term because the term, the defined term in the agreement.
So.
That's obstruction.
I guess what I'm saying is I I think the actual existing sewer line as built. And extends into Oak Lane right now. At the very beginning of it. And that's why I'd asked for a map for a while. I I I think there's a manhole that's actually on what's called Oak Lane. That's all. So I just want to make sure that that. That that first house can hook up.
That is absolutely true. I remember after the gold.
Okay, so that's why I want to make sure that we have that description correct.
No, I can't answer that one. That's for the engineers to answer.
That is. Seared into my memory.
Oh, that it goes in front of the like the first house.
Up, 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 uh, I don't know, twenty yards.
Okay.
Hey. I believe that the two oh five is not included because it's in the village, but it's on Homics Road. Uh going uh west towards Larchmont.
Okay.
It's not in the extension. But it's not on the, it's not in the addition. So it's a no man's land according to the agreement.
But but they can hook up.
Say again?
If 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 there is a, if there's an extension to put down Homics Road, they can hook up.
No, because it says only it talks about the town hooking up on the extension, not the village, and that's the village.
When when Hernani scoped this out. He scoped it out for a big enough pipe for everything out there. With the idea that this would be, you know, something that would allow everyone in the community all up and down those roads to hook up eventually.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think Dan's talking about capacity. I think. The two oh three Homics, which is the house that's sort of the genesis of this. Is in the village. The house, if you're if you're looking at Homics School, the house towards Larchmont, two oh five. Is also in the village. And then the rest of the extension. Or the addition to the extension is in the town because it's in a house that's all the way at the end of Homics Road. So the question is, there's two houses, I think it's two oh three, two oh five Homics and three Oak Lane. That are right, the pipes right, right in front of them. They should be able to hook up. There's capacity for them to hook up. It are they covered in this I M A? I guess that's 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 what I think is Dan's question.
As I, as I read the language, I do not believe that's true, but I would hope I'm wrong, but that's not what I see. And that's what I raised last month.
But just just let me point out. This doesn't mean they're not allowed to hook up. This is about the sewer use fee. So i- i- it's inaccurate to say they're not allowed to hook up.
I'm I didn't say they weren't allowed to hook up. Are they in this agreement is the question. There's two houses in the village.
I didn't.
And are they in the agreement? I know they can hook up. They're they're very proximate to the line. Are are they covered by the agreement?
I I don't want to go back on this again. I really don't. This has been way too much effort for not, you know, this is another like. The 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 work is not, you know, the time we're putting into this could be put into other things.
I agree.
I I just have to say, I feel so sorry for for property owners in the village who come before us and need some things, you know, something done. Because. Gosh, we make it hard. We just make it so hard.
I I, okay, Mr. Natch has made a note motion. I don't hear a second. I would like to make a motion to pass this, but on page seven. The town shall not. Charge the village sewer use fees for discharge of sanitary waste and go back to the original language. Any parcel having frontage on Oak Lane.
I'll second.
Augustino.
Trustees, Wincher?
Yes.
Natchez?
Voting no, although I like the language change. It doesn't go far enough to to protect all the village residents.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Trustee DeFord?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Pickett, I know you're watching. Thank you for building this. Good flushing.
Good flushing. That's great.
If we ever have to do this again, let's get a map at the beginning.
Good idea.
Let's get a map.
Mr. Pickett has his hand up.
I'm muted yourself, sir.
Just wanted to thank you. Just wanted to thank you guys. It's been, it's been a long road. I I know your hearts are in the right place, but it's just been, it's been tough and and uh. And uh looking forward to becoming a Larchmont resident.
See you later.
Whoa, whoa, aren't you a village of American president?
Larchmont P O.
I mean, I mean, I'm a Maranick.
Okay.
You're gonna pay a walk next time you need something.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Uh new business. Okay, just getting a new business. Uh resolution. Adopting proposed fee schedule for harbor rallying voting season. We do, we worked on this in a work session uh weeks ago. These are going up a tiny bit in different places. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
No.
No, I just thank village staff for working on this. I know we're trying to bring ourselves into uh. Being more more like neighboring um communities. So um I think this is, this is good. Thank you.
Sure.
Any new motion?
So moved.
Second.
You know, trustees, Wincher?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Uh the next is the temp. The temporary easement. What's going on? Uh the Boston Post Road Bridge out here on the Maranick, right off of Maranick Avenue, Boston Post Road going over to the Maranick River. Is owned by New York State. New York State is going to be uh. Replacing it. Originally, New York State uh was gonna close the whole bridge for six months. Uh they revised that plan. They're gonna have one way traffic uh each way for six months. They can do half at a time, hopefully. Uh but one of the good things that it's gonna be coming out from the village is that on Harbor Island Park side, the south side of Boston Post Road. Anybody who has ever tried to walk up Boston Post Road on that side, and you know, you take your life in your hands. Uh trying to walk up there, they're going to provide a sidewalk there. Uh which people have been asking for in this community. Probably for eighty years. So uh that's the good thing. The bad thing is the bridge is gonna be closed. But they need a little bit of Harbor Island Park and a little bit of Meagan Park, and they're willing to pay us for these temporary easements. So we're gonna be getting a little revenue from it. So this is the agreement with New York State. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
No, I watched the um, I think it's very nice that they're paying us for the easements.
I do too.
I think it's really nice.
Little bonus.
Yeah, and I I sat, I listened in on that meeting where they described the proposal and it just seems like they really figured out. A way of doing it that's more efficient and gonna be very less disruptive. So um I think we're very lucky.
Uh need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, ladies. Call the roll, please. Trustee Wincher?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh food scrap I M A. This is an I M A Westchester County uh for the food scrap uh. Motion, which was called. The 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 food scrap recycling program that we have.
Compost.
Compost, thank you.
Compost.
Anybody have any questions or concerns? Jerry, has has it been picking up?
Yeah, so um I sent an email earlier this evening. Um it looks like last month we were the second highest recycling. Uh food scrap recycling that we ever had since the program started, so.
Excellent.
Pretty good.
Excellent. And if you go down there, you'll see our employee, Robert. Who's probably the 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 most helpful employee uh I've ever seen down in a municipal waste facility.
Yep.
Always cheerful.
Always cheerful.
Yeah, yeah.
Any new motion?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Call the role, please. Trustees, what's your?
Yes.
That is.
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. The downfall, Jody, I don't know why this is on the regular meeting. We discussed this in executive session and vice the council, and the village is going to send a letter to Westchester County. Delineating the concerns that H D V M C has and also to the Department of State. So. Let's really do a discussion about that. Resolution authorizing execution of amended contract with down earth market. Jerry, you want to give us a little background on this?
Mayor, the change that we have here is that the down to earth market last year was our first year of a multi-year contract. Because of COVID and their request to continue down at Harbor Island Park. We had to put them outside. So they'll be outside in Pavilion Field, starting in early January, going all the way to the middle of April. Weather permitting, of course, but you know, nothing really stops the farmers market people. And they there's a fee structure change because they're not using inside the building. But we're still covering our costs and providing the winter farmers market for the residents of, you know, our tri municipal area.
Great. Any questions or concerns?
Thanks.
Now, I I like welcome the opportunity actually to shop outside, given what's going on. So I think this is a great.
Yeah.
They have they have very nice fruits and vegetables down there and bread. Somebody sells some really nice bread.
Pickles. I I just buy the pickles.
Saying pickle sells the bread.
Remember pickle barrels?
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Okay, I need I'll make that motion.
Second.
What's your? Trustees, what's your?
Yes.
That is.
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. The next is.
Can I ask one question? I just want to make sure we did these easements right because there were two different resolutions. And we voted on one. Do we get it right? Augie, maybe?
We'll go back. We'll go back.
All right, okay, thanks. I just want to before I forget.
We might as well just do it again, you know, health and suspenders, right? Resolution authorizing. Sale of surplus property, what this property is, is the police department. If you look at some of the offices on the street. They carry a yellow taser, and this is a non-lethal device that allows them to. Stop people without. Using either massive force or God forbid their weapon. I seen it in operation. It has a has a huge effect. Taking the steam right out of people who are belligerent. But what this is is the old ones, they got new ones and the old ones. Can be sold, but they don't want to sell them just, you know, to anyone. So they sell to an authorized dealer who probably then resells them. To less endowed police department somewhere else. So I'll make that motion. That we sell our cases as a declaration of surplus property.
I'll second.
What's your? Trustees, what's your?
Yes.
That is.
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Resolution authorizing engineering service for West Basin Seawall repair. Jerry, you want to go through this quickly?
Mayor, this is a fourteen thousand six hundred dollar engineering cost for the repair of the. Worst portion of the West Basin Seawall. Directly in front of the Coast Guard Building and very close to the other buildings. This is a must do, and so we need to get our engineers going on this and get this done. It includes all of the land use board applications and approvals and everything throughout the whole process. Of course, it's only fourteen thousand six. That's just for the engineering. They will provide some type of a cost estimate. Of what the actual repair will cost us, which, you know, could be a couple of bucks. That's.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
A second.
Trustees, what's your?
Yes.
That is.
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
The next item is resolution accepting Westchester Joint Water Works project pump station modifications. And a P R B, which is a pressure reduction valve. So cost of project is one million seven hundred twenty two thousand dollars. The village pays twenty seven point eight percent. That's based upon water use usage, not upon population. And that would be four hundred and seventy eight thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars. There is a a long email backup. In our work session from Mr. Birdsall. From the. Was just a joint waterworks, talking about the need and what this system actually does. That being said. I would. Any questions or concerns? I'll make that motion.
You ignored a second. Trustees, what's your?
Yes.
That is.
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Resolution for a change order on the two thirty four Stanley Avenue Roof Project, two thirty four Stanley Avenue. Is between Mount Pleasant and Maple. The village owns the building there. The Community Counseling Center is located there. Village owns the building and we maintain it. It is a very, very old building and we are replacing the roof. And Jerry, just want to go into what's going on here.
Mayor, this is the very, very last piece of the project that we that we did last year, which was. In excess of a half million dollars. This is an eleven thousand dollar change order that the Board of Trustees has to approve. And this finalizes some overage from another project, I believe, at the MEMS building. So this wraps things up and gets everything concluded.
Just want to point out, Community Counseling Center is there if you need them. If you're having any kind of emotional problems, problems. With substance abuse, children having difficulty, they they have a very sliding scale. If you cannot afford it, they will not turn you away. So do not struggle with mental health problems if you have them. And from time to time, we all have them. It's nothing to be ashamed of. So please, if you have any of the Community Counseling Center that they're on Stanley Avenue, two thirty four Stanley. Please avail yourself of that needed service, and we thank them for it. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Fusco? Trustees, what's your?
Yes.
That is.
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, the next is authorization to replace damaged police vehicles. We had one police vehicle. That was destroyed in the fire, an electrical fire inside the car. And there was another police vehicle that was destroyed in an accident. They were both totaled out by insurance. We're going to get about twenty five percent of the cost of replacing two vehicles from our insurance provider. But the village needs the cars on the road. And as trustee to four pointed out in work session, these will be hybrid cars and first hybrid cars. That have ever been bought by the village of America.
Mayor, can I? Mayor, can I say something?
Sure.
Earlier this year, we had the opportunity to purchase two additional cars, which were budgeted from from last year. And for a very, very small change order fee, not really change order, but just a an adjustment in the price. They they switched out the conventional vehicles for two hybrids. So we already have two hybrids. And these will be two additional hybrids. So we would now have four hybrids in our fleet.
Good for us.
Yeah. With the numbers a little bit and we're able to get the the two additional hybrids earlier this year.
I feel our carbon emissions dropping as we speak.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Always beat a police cars. They used to always argue for having V eight engines. They always wanted an eight cylinder engine because, you know. I guess we all grew up watching Starsky and Huss, and we get that the only way to catch a criminal was to chase him at a hundred and thirty miles an hour.
Yeah, not like that now.
As I said, three and a half years ago, we we I I saw the demonstration of this Ford interceptor. They were buying it and I said, let's let's get on it. I had a little bit of reluctance, but. Now it's been proving that they are as fast, probably even better than the ones before. Yep, finally.
We're doing good.
When they used to drive a Ford. For what? Crown X, yeah. I had one one time for a few years, and it had eight cylinders. And when when you put your foot on the gas. It was it was like, you know, when you watch Star Trek and I go into a warp speed, it kind of felt like that.
That's what Bill Murray collects.
Does he really?
Yes. I'm not sure why I know that.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
What's your? Trustees, what's your?
Yes.
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay, we have to go back to one time?
Yeah, we got to go back to resolution. And what we're going to do is we're going to do resolution number two, map twenty, parcel twenty, known as flood, cold deck, and harbor on park. The first resolution that we passed was map seventeen, parcel seventeen, Megan Park, and this will be. The temporary easement of possible twenty, known as flood, cold deck area, harbor on park. I'll make that motion.
Second.
This call. Trustees, what's your?
Yes.
That is.
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Thank you, Nora, for finding that.
You're welcome.
Do we need? I'm sorry, Jared, but do we? We discussed adding a session to. Do we need to do that on officially? On Wednesday?
That's advice accounts. We don't even know if the council's going to be ready yet. Do you know what I'm saying? I think we could do. We don't have to notice and advise the council.
I think because we're going to make a decision, we need to notice it.
Okay, this might not happen to.
Right, but at least we noticed it. I mean.
Okay, I'll take care of that. I'll make a motion that the village board is going to meet. With the Labor Council for advice to council at noon on Wednesday. Probably by telephone.
I think we have to call it an executive session because if we make a decision, we have to be in an exec in a meeting.
Okay, we'll contemplate going into executive session at that time.
Thanks.
Make a motion. I made a motion.
Oh, I'll second.
All favor.
Hi.
Mr. Tippett, yeah, this is the second. Second round. Be gentle, Mr. Tippett. It's a ten.
Hello, everyone. Let's start. I wish everybody the best, happiest Thanksgiving that you can. And I know we have an executive order for only ten people, but you are allowed to have thirty people at a funeral. So name your turkey, Andrew. Send out the notice on Wednesday. Hold the wake on Thursday, cremation followed by cannibalism. Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving. On the budget. I know I've been tough on you. I think Jerry and Augie are doing an outstanding job. When I talk about you have the six hundred thousand out of the reserve balance, I realize that we do that every year. I also realize normally we're very conservative with our revenues. And our expenses, and normally you have a surplus. This is an extraordinarily hard year. That's why I am asking. I know that there's a bunch of sor sororities that have been filed with the town of Marineric. How many involve the village? This is something perfect for the budget committee to look at. Look at the sor sororities. Look at how many of them are going to be up by June. And then give a number between thirty and seventy percent. This is where our liability is. That way, it's a little bit more structured. You have a number of lawsuits. Get a number of what you think the current lawsuits are going to cost you up to June first. That way you can make adjustments. How many outstanding parking tickets do we have? That's something I've been asking you for years. This is the perfect situation. What is your projected revenue from parking tickets? How many are outstanding? These are the tools that if you give Jerry and Augie, they can come back to you and say, hey. Realistically, this is what we're looking at. They can't tell you whether there's going to be a giant snowstorm. And they're going to spend five hundred thousand dollars, or there's not going to snow at all this winter, and there'll be a two hundred thousand dollar surplus. That's between them and God. I hope they're making good donations to the church. But for the rest of it, give them all the tools they need. And then if you have to come back to the village and then give them, hey, you know what? We know that we're going to be in the hole higher this year. We're going to do two million dollars out of the reserve fund where we can do it. Augie and Jerry are not allowed to raise taxes. Augie and Jerry. All they do is they they collect the taxes that are appropriated, the money that's appropriated. They control the expenses as dictated by by you. They have to have the tools. If you if you're going to say, look, we we need to go two million into the reserve fund. Or we're going to bond another million dollars or. At least have them where they have the tools they need to make the big decision. Here's the here's the tools. Now come back to us with the decisions with numbers that you look at and let the budget committee. Go look at the parking tickets. Go look at the sor sororities. Go go look at where your legal costs are headed. Augie and Jerry don't need to do this. You have a budget committee that can research this for you. Next year, I already know that you're going to be ahead because there was a revalve up in Ry and Ry Neck. Residential housing went up. Augie probably could already tell you what that number is. Because I think they already had the challenges of the revalve. What is that? What is what is that number? How does it help the village? But on the other hand, how many challenges are you going to have on your commercial property? Because they've either been closed or reduced hours. I know a lot of restaurants. Their landlords have actually reduced their rent to try to keep them alive or skip payments. Well, you know as well as I do, when when it comes to property tax time, they're going to be reflecting the breaks they gave their renters. For what they pay in taxes. And they can only go back one year. So this not only is for this year, for the years forward. Let's give these guys the best tools that they can have to have the job done. I think you're doing a terrific job. I'm not criticizing you. But I don't want you guys to be caught in a bind in March and April, and it says, wow, we didn't know that it could be this bad. Happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy. It turkey Andrew, enjoy. Bye bye.
You know what? We forgot to do one thing. The the resolution about the power plant.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm going to make.
Power plant.
Power plant. I'm going to make a motion. To add an item to the agenda.
A second.
Trustee, what's your?
Yes.
Trustee, that is.
Yes.
Trustee, Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
Yes.
I'll say yes to.
Yes, yes.
Mayor Murphy? Not calling me anymore. He's assuming that I'm just a yes on everything. Trying to keep up my notes.
Trying to pick up my notes. Okay, there was a resolution passed by Committee for the Environment, the trustee Natchez was kind enough to forward to us. We all have that resolution in our email. Make it part of the record. I, I, I would move that we pass the resolution that was passed by the Committee for the Environment to oppose the building of the murderous name, Ankershire Power Plant, this is a power plant that they're building up by Newburgh. And what it is, is they want to use the frac natural gas and diesel to create electricity. And I think that all of us agree that the best use of carbon is to keep it in the ground these days. The, the more carbon we burn, more it's going to hurt our children and our grandchildren, and God knows, we've hurt them enough. So we're asking them not to build this plant and to try to find other ways of producing electricity that are renewable. That in some in substance is the message of the resolution.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Augustino. Trustees Winchester?
Yes.
Natchez?
Know, everybody to know that Committee for the Environment voted unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Lucas?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Thank you all. Okay. Report from village men.
Mayor, you'll see some changes or everyone will see some changes on Mamarone Avenue in the downtown. Very quickly, there'll be new decorations going up, old decorations coming down. But the one thing I want to announce is that we will be providing for the downtown businesses as well as the one on, the ones, the businesses on Boston Post Road and on Halsted. Free parking, free metered parking from November twenty-fifth to December twenty-fifth to try to encourage people to shop downtown. They don't have to worry about the meters, to be able to increase the takeout or indoor dining. And also be able to, you know, utilize our village a little bit more without the worry and, and concern about paying for parking. That's it for me.
Mr. Coach Treffer?
Yes, Mayor, just to notice the second half tax payment is due during the month of December. Second item is we have a resignation of a traffic committee member, Atlanta Stone. That is all.
Thanks, Bob, you have nothing?
Nothing from me, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to have, I'm going to do one thing before we close. Minister Board Committee Work Session, Regular Session, Board of Trustees, February ninth, and a special meeting of October fourteenth, twenty twenty. Minister Planning Board, June tenth, June twenty-fourth, July twenty-second, twenty twenty. Minister Ethics Board, August third, August fourteenth, August seventeenth, September fourteenth, September seventeenth, and October sixth, twenty twenty. We started this meeting tonight by saying goodbye to a couple of longtime employees. But we're going to end it saying goodbye to someone who's been with the village, not a long time, but it has made a, a really good impact. The Deputy Village Attorney, Kristy Mason, who's just come out of hiding, is meeting us. She is going on to bigger embedded things in her life and I, I am positive that she will meet with nothing but success and happiness in her life. She has, you know, it's been great to watch her. She has grown both in confidence and in skill in the time she's been with us in the Village of Mamarone. She is a joy to work with. She, you know, tries to get things done in a timely fashion. You know, this board and myself tend to put attorneys through their paces. She really rose to the challenge. And she's going to be, you know, moving on in her life and we want to wish her nothing but happiness and joy and all the best. You've done a really great job here in this community and we're all going to miss you and I know Ms. Roberts, who's on, thinks of you as her work daughter. And she will miss you as well, as, as will the rest of the village staff here in village hall. It was so nice having you here, it was great to have you be able to interact with our employees. And I, I personally want to thank you for the hard work you put in in your time here in the Village of Mamarone. And I wish you and your husband all the best.
I, I can't even say anything that was as kind as that, so I, I truly, truly appreciate it. It's been, it's been such a learning experience for me and I'm thankful to all of you for allowing me to come in from this past year and a half or so and really grow and learn and thankful to Bob for taking me on and giving me this chance. And I just, I, I truly can't say enough how much I appreciate it and how much I value the relationships that I've made, so. I hope we all stay in touch and, and that this isn't the end of our friendship, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy.
Go on.
Thank you, Kristy.
Sally.
I was crying.
Who's crying?
Sally.
Okay, thank you, listen, I, I, I wish everyone of my colleagues, everyone who works for the village, everyone who's watching tonight and who watches in the future, most happy Thanksgiving. Listen, it's obviously, it's obviously a difficult year. A lot of us aren't going to be where we want to be, but it's just a year and we'll get through it. You know, I, 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 I care a lot about Glenn, but I don't agree with him, I think we should keep those gatherings to under ten. This is really important, we're going through extremely dangerous time in this country. If we do what we're supposed to do, a lot less people are going to die. If we don't do what we're supposed to do, a lot more people are going to die. I don't know how to make that any more clear. This is about saving people's lives. So please, please, enjoy your holiday and do it responsibly. You know, and our kids are coming home from college. You know, you don't want to give anything to mom and dad or grandpa or grandpa, that they're not going to be able to fight off. So with that being said, I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving and we will see you all in December. Good night.
Thank you.
Sorry, we lost internet here.
Do, do we have to close the meeting? Anyone?
Need a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Hi. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.